The right time over there, eight, eight forty?
Seven forty.
I mean, seven thirty, eight, never mind.
There you go, close enough. And we're televised and...
Yes, we are, oh, for everyone in the audience, we are televised and audio recorded. So, we have a hearing continuance from seven thir- from, what was the date that this was continued from?
This was continued from February eleventh.
February eleventh for two forty-two Dedham Street, Leo's Landing. They're requesting a continuance to March eighteenth.
And the reason they are working on the drainage study and that's not yet completed.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion to continue this to March eighteenth?
Um, I move to continue the two forty-two Dedham Street landing site plan re- um, to March eighteenth at, uh, biddy, biddy, biddy.
I think it's on the time.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, oh, it's at the end there, okay, nine o'clock, yep.
Seven.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dunkin' Donuts at one thirty-four Main Street. Boy, that was quick, you just walked in and you're here.
Yeah, do you need five minutes? You're not on for another five minutes.
Oh, is it, uh?
Yeah.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, okay, I thought, is it already at a public hearings? Oh, it's a modification, oh, okay.
Should I move this up?
Yeah, you can move it to get ready.
Yeah, you can move, you can move mine off of there if you want.
Right in here, all right, or?
Yeah.
She's just basically saying that it was always intended that way, right? It was always meant to be a connection.
Yes, yes.
So, that's good.
Yeah.
Can I show it to Jeff? I don't think he saw it.
Uh, Jeff, you want to take a look at that, that little bit of information there?
Steve, we're going to require us to read this?
We will, but not till seven forty-five.
It's seven forty-five, you can, because it is an initial public hearing.
Right, yep.
Okay.
Andrea is on her way.
Okay.
Um, the BOS did appoint her as an associate member, so she just has to get to work, so.
So, what do we have here?
A bunch of signs over there on top of the cabinet.
All right.
Study that map a little bit.
You'll notice that there's another packet in front of you that has all the zoning articles that are potentially going to show up on, um, uh, on the warrant. And they've, they come from several different sources. So, we'll probably just go over them a little later in the, uh, in the evening.
Have they been reviewed by town council yet, or?
Nothing has been reviewed by town council yet. Some of them are by petition, some of them are from Bob Bullock, some from the zoning bylaw study committee, and one from the planning board. Well, let's say now, we could have one conversation that has nothing to do with something that's on our agenda. That has to do with the comments from PSC regarding the traffic study, the impact study for one oh-six, one oh-eight Main Street. Did anyone get a chance to look over the recommendations from Tom?
Yeah, I read it.
Uh, do you have any comments on it? Do you feel as though that this is the, the full scope? Do you want to add anything to it, or take anything off? No, I wanted to ask you one thing, Tom. Can any of the existing information of the downtown traffic counts and everything else still be used, or is that all too old now?
Well, the sort of rule of thumb in Massachusetts is not to use traffic count data that's older than two years.
Oh, okay, so that's older than two years.
The stuff that Koller and Colantonio did a number of years ago is pretty, pretty outdated by now. Also, the last few years haven't been entirely representative of typical traffic conditions due to the economy, so I think it's probably better to recount it.
All right.
It, it's not expensive, it's probably three hundred dollars to do an intersection morning and evening, and probably about three hundred for an ATR count, so it's not, not huge dollars.
Now, there had been a recommendation at the, at our last... The last hearing? To bring it out to other intersections. Does anyone else feel as though it's important to bring it out to even say this intersection out here where, um, oh, is that Independence Drive comes out onto Main Street? Anybody, uh?
No, I, I think it's adequate to come up to the intersection there.
I think that, I think the traffic circle's where the bulk of the problem's going to be, right?
Yeah, every time you hit a fairly major intersection like that, you get a further dissipation of the traffic, and it's, well, not insignificant, it's not a major traffic generator, so I don't think it would have any perceivable effect on intersections beyond. I mean, you, you typically count the nearest intersection on either side of a site, but beyond that, you probably only do it for major projects, so.
So, do we agree with the, um, the parameters for this traffic study?
Just taking a final look.
Okay.
So, it's good so far.
Well, Steve, I have, I've not really been involved with one before, so I really don't have a good comparison, so to speak. What Tom proposed seems adequate to me.
Yeah, it, it, it's not a huge traffic study, it's not one that goes out to multiple intersections. But I think it hits the area that's most impacted.
Yes, the two intersections, one the center and one the other end.
Yeah.
And when we say the proposed project is the full buildout of one oh-six and one oh-eight, do we mean their most current, their most current plan? Because it's changed so many times with different numbers of units, which will impact different numbers of cars, so.
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah.
What do we want to consider as the full buildout? Full potential, or where we're at right now?
Well, my, my, my assumption is that, that the most recent plan is the one that they're going for.
Yeah.
That's what I meant by full buildout.
Maybe we just clarify by reflecting the number of units, which, I got some notes on that, was, uh, twenty-four and eighteen, so forty-two, forty-two units.
Okay.
So, twenty-four on one oh-six and eighteen at one oh-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, why don't we, um, switch over to the public hearing, and then that way there we can have a little bit more time before we put a pin in that.
Oh. It is time to go to, um, the public hearings, but, oh, yeah, if you want to discuss that longer, I mean, I, I, I thought that most people, like, had already read it, but you didn't have anything to...
I took a look at it.
Oh, okay. All right, so, now we're going to be, um, opening the modification for Dunkin' Donuts at one thirty-four Main Street. Okay, if you could just identify yourself.
Let me read the, uh...
Oh, that's right, yep, read the notice.
Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass General Law Section forty A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section F eleven, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen, at seven forty-five PM in room one oh-five C at the Norfolk Town Hall, one Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a modified site plan application for property located at one thirty-four Main Street in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, John Prempis, is proposing to modify the existing drive-through layout at the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. The property is located in the B-one zoning district, reference assessors map fourteen block fifty-six lot thirty-nine. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
All right.
Okay, I'm Paul Cutler with Landmark Engineering, and this is the, the existing site plan at one thirty-four Main Street, which is the Dunkin' Donuts. Main Street being here, Carlson Circle here, and as a right-of-way back here, back to the MBTA. The existing lot is forty-two thousand five hundred and seventy square feet. The existing Dunkin' Donuts building is located here, uh, with their driveway coming in here off of Main Street, and then there's parking spaces along here and in front of the building, and there's a few spaces out in the back. The drive-through currently comes in off of Main Street, drives up through the site, there's a, a menu board here and with a speaker, and that comes in and drives around here. The drive-through window is located here at the site, and then it continues on out and they exit the site. I guess there's been some problems with some queuing going back onto Main Street, so that's the reason we're here tonight, is to try to alleviate some of that queuing. What we've done, this is the existing site. I have made a couple of modifications to this plan from the one you've seen due to the comments that Tom had. Before I go on to that, but there is a, there's an existing pipe here that was confused, I guess people thought it might have been a vent for the septic system, and that actually it's an old gas pipe that's, that's going to be removed. The vent for the septic system is, is back here, right beside the retaining wall. This is, the proposed plan that we're proposing tonight is to come in off of Main Street again and make a turn to the right, and the drive-through would come around the outside of the parking area located here. The drive-through would come up around, go out, with the menu board here being slightly tilted, uh, or relocated slightly so that people could read it coming from in this direction, and then the drive-through window would be in the same spot, and then exiting again. I've made this drive-through approximately eleven feet wide. That comes in here, and I did some, I did a queuing plan showing, uh, car locations coming in here, whereas before we had a queue area of approximately six spaces that would be located in the driveway and be in the parking area. This way, we've increased the, the number of cars by about five, so we have about eleven that we could stack up rather than just the six here. We're also calling for this, for an area here, a affirmed area between the existing parking space, spaces, and the new drive-through, and that would be a granite curbing in this area, but this would also be landscaped in here, and then where we're blocking this off, there's about a five-foot strip here that we would be landscaping also. There was some question that Tom came up with about the septic system, and I did plot the existing septic system, and I put that on a separate plan here just to show where it's located. And it's basically underneath the parking area located here. It doesn't go out into where our proposed drive-through is. This is, this is actually taken from the as-built plans that I got from the board of help. I did make a couple of changes to the plan according to the comments that Tom had. I did do this plan for the septic system, and I showed that this, this is where the vent is located for the septic system, back here, not out in this area. I did number the parking spaces, that was one of the comments, and I also noted that these parking spaces back here at the rear of the site would be for employee parking only, that would not be for the public parking, so that, you know, if they had to back out to leave, they're not going to be in the queuing lane. These would be permanent spots for the, for the employees.
And how, how was that managed to make sure that you don't have patrons parking there?
We're going to have to put a sign, sign up for employee parking only.
Was there a couple of spaces that were going to be set aside if, if you were going to have somebody pull out of the queue for a, for a specialty item? That was something that had been discussed. Was, was it going to be in the back, or?
Well, we talked to John about that before, and he said that what they do now is that they ask these people to go over here and park.
Oh.
And they carry out that, that extra, that item out to those people.
All right, so back to, back to that point, I, I think what you were implying is that because it's strictly for employees that you can mitigate the concern as far as having some type of issue with cars backing into cars that are in the drive-through?
Yeah, because they're not going to be in and out like, like a normal customer.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that, but, but, but please, let me continue on.
Again, I reiterated that this was going to be a landscaped area, landscaped area, and we also are going to, there's a, there's a dumpster back here currently, and we'd like to move that dumpster out to this area here where it's easier access for the garbage people to pick up their, um, garbage at this location rather than back here. Back here, it's, it has a problem even today with, at the, at the different times that they may come in with their truck to pick up the garbage. They're going right across where the area for the drive-through is, so this would alleviate that.
And is that an update from what we have here in front of us, the dumpster location? I, I think you've updated it since this, this one.
I think that was on there before. I also, uh, there was a comment from Tom about the, the spacing of the vehicles, and I did increase that spacing to twenty-five feet between the sound lines of the cars.
Yeah, we relocate, he's marking us relocating, but he doesn't tell you where it's coming.
And I did add, um, oh, the, what the grading is, the proposed revision of the grading on the, on the, on the drive-through area, I added those elevations on there also. That's about it, I think. I also added, um, arrows to be painted on the drive-through area as to how to get through. We did add a sign, we relocated this drive-through sign to this location that was out in this area.
Okay, Tom, you have comments, right?
Yes, I do. I think Paul picked up on a lot of them, so I can try to just go through it quickly here. First comment was just a legibility issue on a few of the existing verses proposed, that's just a CAD issue to the septic... Well, yeah, it's, it's hard to differentiate sometimes, like, sometimes, you know, the existing is dashed and light, but like the proposed island is also dashed, and the conduit is sort of flipped back and forth between being dashed and solid, and I, it's just, you know, I, you know, whoever did the CAD, just go through and edit it just for a little bit of legibility. Septic system you plotted, that was comment two. Comment seven, no upgrades proposed to the existing stormwater management system. We don't believe there are any sort of water quality devices on the site. We're suggesting comment eight, that something be done, maybe a four fifty I storm septic installed instead of that, uh, existing catch basin, uh...
Does the site really not have any, any treatment from that, Ron?
It's not depicted on the plan, so I don't know.
Not that I found, I, I plotted the existing drainage system from the plans that I've been able to receive, and what, what basically it calls for is a catch basin in the back here that picks up basically all of this area, including the roof runoff of the, of the building. There's a catch basin here, it goes, goes into a, a series of leaching galleys, concrete galleys that are located here, and it goes into a drain manhole for an overflow and runs out to another set of leaching galleys located here. This also has an overflow that runs out, um, to the drain manholes and runs basically out to the street as an, as an overflow.
Okay.
The next stormwater comment is ten, and this is probably the most significant. Most of the site sheet flows out into the street, or a good portion of the site, sheet flows out into the street, yes. All, it is also kind of a minor detail, we've got the, uh, catchment area divided on, on that plan that shows the drainage areas. It looks like the back portion of that main lot starts to go backwards, but there's no place for the water to go there, so there's got to be maybe another catch basin put if you're going to keep that grading that way, because the last three or four spaces drain backward to a curbing, and there's no drainage structure there, so that's kind of a detail, but most significant thing, I know it probably does it now, having a good deal of the site sheet flowing to the street, I don't know that the town wants to continue that. I noticed on one of your plans, there appeared to be a catch basin added there, I didn't know whether that was actually new.
I did, I was thinking of putting a catch basin here at the end, drive through, pick up the drainage for this area.
Well, if we could get some of that parking lot into that, that would be probably preferable to post that, just come out, but, yeah, that's, um... All right, then more on sheet flow and comment eleven. On comment twelve, I suggested that we actually observe the queue length that is occurring out at the site now. I think it would be, you know, important for the board to know what the existing condition is, because the, a lot of the improvement here is more getting the, um, getting the queuing out of the middle of the parking area, which is a huge improvement functionally, but the number of vehicles that we're actually adding in queue are maybe four, so if queuing is a real problem now, I think we should probably be aware of that, saying that the board wouldn't be able to deal with it, but I think having the information, whether or not it really backs up to the street now, is something that we should know before we spend a, a good deal of money to fix things up, and it may, may not be sufficient. At least we should know that, I think, so I think somebody should observe that. Again, it, to get a traffic engineer out there for three hours on one morning, I think is, you know, a reasonable cost.
Hey, John, let him work through the comments, and then just make, make your notes.
Um, okay, uh, we'd like to see the point where the drive-through divides from the rest of the parking area moved into the site a little bit. We had talked about maybe one way to do that, but right now, unless you're an experienced site user, you know, you're, you're entering the site, and then all of a sudden you got a veer to the right, we'd like to have kind of those two things separated, come into the site and then make a decision as to whether to go into the drive-through or into the parking area. You can do that without really losing the spaces as we had, uh, talked about.
Well, that, would that require narrowing the, the entrance of that access to the, um, the, the drive-through? Because, I mean, it...
What I was thinking of doing was taking out, excuse me, pull my, jump in front of you, to take out these last three spaces there, take two of them and put them here, sort of backed up to the street, so that the point where the drive-through peels off is in line with this, uh, driveway here, so you're into the site, yeah, this is my... That was my idea. So, you're losing one space by doing that.
I mean, you talked about concerns backing up even in the drive-through lane, I think that would even be worse.
Yeah, that looks, that looks actually worse to me, I, I...
Oh, sorry.
The, the issue we're trying to address there, whether that's an optimal solution, I don't know, but the idea is to have the choice of whether to enter the drive-through or to enter the parking area to be made on the site after you've safely entered the site, dealing with the vehicle conflicts of entering the site, so separating that out would be much better than having the two points so close together, so. How that's done, maybe Paul could think of a better solution than that, but the issue remains. Comment fourteen, just, we think we should narrow down that opening a bit, having a, a twelve-foot, um, outbound lane and a twenty-foot inbound lane. Comment fifteen, again, we'd recommend widening out that eleven-foot pavement in the drive-through lane to twenty feet by the bypass capability.
Tom, on fourteen, when you said the twenty and twelve, did I, did I miss something here? You're not, you're not splitting those, are you?
No, no, just a slightly wider lane on the right side to allow you to sort of...
No, no, I can see the reasoning why, so it's just, but it'll be just paint?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It doesn't actually have to be physically wide, right?
Actually, the issue is that that's forty feet.
Oh.
And, yeah, just in terms of exposing pedestrians to conflicts with vehicles. I think it can be tightened up and have the site function just as well. Comment sixteen, we're talking about the, um, employees' parking spaces there, we'd like to see it widened out, it gets very narrow as it goes to this, uh, end here. I understand those people would be getting into those spaces before the vehicles are in queue, but nonetheless, it is very tight there. The board should also be aware that the only way to get into those spaces is to go through the drive-through lane, fundamentally a one-way circulation pattern here.
Well, when, when does the, the worst part of the queuing occur? I mean, I don't go to the center of town in the morning, so I, I'm not familiar with the timing that, uh...
Hi, John. The, the worst part is between seven and nine, all my employees are in at seven, by the latest, so, i- in my opinion, I'm at the store probably three, four times a week, those cars are going there, they're not backing out until after eleven, there would be zero issue with the drive-through queue, zero. It's not an issue right now.
With the drive-through queue interfering with people backing out of their employee parking lot.
It's not an issue right now.
Yeah, I understand, okay, I'm just trying to clarify what you were saying, yeah.
I think that the, the comments have to do with the, the furthest ones down, so how tight are those spaces?
Just a regular pace.
If there was, if, yeah, but if there was a queue there, I mean, I, I don't know if anyone leave, what, what do they, what time would that shift be over? Would it be like twelve o'clock? And there's no queue at that time of day?
No, I, our queue really, I mean, theoretically, like, right now, our, our queue dies down around nine o'clock, April, May, June, then it jumps up again at two, but...
Can you reach that plan?
There's really, like, there's, there's no issue.
One second, Paul, what is your, uh, what's the space, the rightmost space for employee parking? It's a nine by nineteen?
They're all nine foot by nine.
Okay, and what's the, uh, from the end of the nineteen foot mark, what is the distance to the, um... Whatever that berm is, right.
About sixteen feet.
Okay, so...
That, that was the point, and one issue is when the queue is there. But with only sixteen feet to cur, turn a car and with cars parked in the adjacent spaces, that's so tight, that in itself is just-
Right, and I know in an ideal world, normally you're back-to-back them on twenty-four, but if this is predominantly dead parking, I think we have to think of that.
Question, you have nine spaces here, and then another three here, how many employees?
So there's, there's nine there, and there's, there's, there's two other ones there. So I, usually I have eight to nine, I have eight to nine employees that work during the week, weekends is the issue. I have like eleven, twelve, if, if I go thirteen. I mean, my employees right now are parking on the grass next door, it's just, it's just a sloppy situation. So it's just, it's better if they, the nine, the predominant nine park there, and then like, you know, if I come or like my GM's there, my manager, they park on those other two spots. It's just, it's way easier to do.
Well, what if, can, can we label certain spaces compact cars only, or something along those lines? But still, sixteen feet, you know, to get your car out beyond the other car and- Steve wants his own spot, he has a little back garden. No, I just know that sixteen feet is, is shorter than what is, is usually given for someone to turn.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
First of all, we don't have a backup issue at one thirty-four Main Street right now, back to the Main Street. Number one, the issue was concern, and what we try to do here, we try to work together as a team. You brought up, Mr. Chairman, you brought up the, uh, the last modification we've done to move the menu board. You said it, and I agree with you a hundred percent. The issue why we're doing this, the people, they're parking on the parking spaces, and they try to back up in the morning, as you come to our shop, and you know, then we have a problem where the, uh, drive-through lane goes through. That's what we're trying to do right now. That's the only issue, cars backing up to the Main Street. Cars don't backing up to the Main Street because we don't do efficiency and service and everything else. Ninety-five percent of the time, we prove so much, we can have, you know, data to show you to you, and with the number one in the district, less than a minute and a half by the time you go to the menu board and you pick up your order to drive through. That's why we try to do this. The only issue we have is when cars try to backing up customers, and you have people going to the drive-through lane, the drive-through lane customers, and security, they wanna wait to let the other customers go by. That's the only issue we have, we don't have any backup to the Main Street, so let's clear that.
I will agree with that, since the menu board has been moved, the queuing on the-
I, I have, I have data.
I agree with-
I have data that I can provide, I mean-
It is, it is not too far, at, at times, it's not too far off of Main Street, but the issue is more the competing traffic.
And I got- That's why we try to divide now, we have parking spaces only for customers, they come into the shop. And customers that wanna use the drive-through, they can use the drive-through. Ninety-five percent of the time, when you walk to the Dunkin', as a driver, you know which way you're gonna go. You're gonna go drive-through or you're gonna go parking. You don't have to, you have too many signs that says parking here and drive-through there. Customers already know what you're going to do.
That's true. I don't think there's anything in our, our regs that, um, if they're providing the nine-by-nineteen spot, there's nothing to stop us from labeling some compact, right? Well, that's, yeah, that's just it, because, you know, you don't want a Cadillac parking there that's gonna require twenty feet behind them to be able to get out and turn. No, I didn't know that, but, so yeah, you stay out of that space.
Yeah, I don't go there.
Yeah. Alright, Tom, you wanna, uh, keep going?
Yeah, um, comment eighteen, we recommended a special order space be provided. Comment twenty, it's just the head-to-head spacing of the cars in the drive-through, just in the visual, that's been updated. Uh, comment twenty-one is the relocated dumpster. We don't like that location, it's highly visible. It actually encroaches over the curb the way it's, uh, the way it's drawn, so, uh, it would be nice if a better location could be found for that. I understand it's accessible, but it's also pretty visible.
Do you have a recommendation, Tom, Mr. Ware?
Not really, um...
You, you're saying it's, it's over the curb?
Uh, yeah, it's, um...
Well, that curb, you have to-
Yeah, that curb's gonna go away.
Oh.
And there's gonna be a stock, there's gonna be a fence around like we have right now.
Oh, so it, it'd have a gate that would-
Oh, yeah. The same setup we have right now will be the same exact setup. It's more ideal for like the employees, so they're not dragging trash bags across the parking lot than-
Alright.
No. No updated landscaping shown. Site lighting, there are two poles near the drive-through, I don't know whether they're shielded, but maybe just taking the shields off would help to light the drive-through. Uh, plans should reference the vertical datum that's used. And, uh, no information about directional signage. Comment twenty-seven, grading, I think you've added that. And twenty-eight, there's no sedimentation or roach controls indicated on the ground. Those are our comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Michelle, do you have any questions? All set? Peter?
Um, other than the ones we brought up, just one further one, John or Teddy. The, what's the remainder land after you put in that drive-through on the, on your other lot there?
Okay, so, so the reason why we'd, I'd like to do it this way is we, we do have future growth potential. I mean, we've been contacted by several people that are interested in the land next door to do a lease, so we'd like to try to maximize and have as much, or minimize and have as much, you know, land available. Uh, I'm sure Paul would probably know that, would you, you, how much space would be left after we, after we do the lane?
Uh, the reason for my question is I just wanna make sure that you actually still have the opportunity-
I think there's about a quarter of an acre, it's around a quarter of an acre to be-
Okay, so, Paul?
Yeah, it's about eighty-five feet.
And realistically, anything you're gonna do, you probably have frontage or come off Carlson or something?
We'd probably come off that side road.
Come off this, probably this road.
The right away.
I guess Carlson's on the left, right. I always forget. That, right of way, okay.
That's why we're doing this, we have a budget and, and we like to minimize our budget. I mean, we don't like to spend a lot of money. We don't, we're not building here the city of Rome, that's the one, but just a little lane, you know, let's, let's be clear, you know? So we do have a budget, and we'd like to work with you guys and make it easy for everybody, for our employees, for our customers, and the safety for our customers also. That's why we're doing all that.
Just curious if there was just future development possibility, that's all.
That's why we do it, yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Walter, do you have?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to, to just get a sense of the board, uh, number twelve about the queue. From personal observation, are we satisfied with the information we received from the operator, or?
I, I have data.
I understand, or, or, you know, should we indeed pursue Tom's suggestion?
Well, in my opinion, they're, they're stating that their goal for doing this is not necessarily a reduction in queue, although, or in addition to the queue, although it does help achieve that.
Yes, it does, yeah.
It's really for mitigating the conflict between pedestrians, vehicles parking, and vehicles in the queue. So although we could ask them to do that, they're not coming here tonight telling us that they're trying to make the modification to meet that goal.
Well, having stood out there for some period of time, a few weeks ago, to collect signatures, nominations, signatures, I had firsthand observation, I guess, and, and I agree with you.
Should've had him count in traffic while he was out there.
The challenges that I saw were related to the conflict with the folks exiting the drive-through. So that's not to say that that drive-through doesn't come, you know, fairly proximate to Main Street, but I did not see it, um, I did not see it getting to Main Street. It was probably, probably never got within, say, one or two, two, two cars of Main Street, I would say.
Walter, I'm, I don't, I don't know if I'm talking from the audience or not, but, um, I take those trains that are causing the backup at Dunkin' Donuts. And even if it, even if they were only trying to increase the queue by, by four cars, that would make a big difference. And the fact that, the fact that, um, the entrance is down near where you enter the site gives, I think, and I'm not an engineer, the driver an opportunity to decide, I either see a parking space or I see line, I see space in the queue, and you can make your decision right there.
Yeah.
So I actually, um, I think that having that, having the, the drive entrance into the queue next to the entrance to the site is actually more useful than hiding it inside the parking spaces. So the only concern I would have, it's, I think, I think it'll make a huge difference. I think more people will get out of their cars and use the parking if the queue isn't in the middle of the area, because it just makes it not effective.
What's the total queue number again?
Right, right now it's six, but I, I mean, it's-
Is the one proposed?
Almost double.
So if I have my chance of grabbing one at the counter quick or waiting twelve-
Our goal, our goal here, as Andrea touched, is we're trying to get people to go through the drive-through if they're in a, if they're in a hurry, you, by all means, use the drive-through. But we have outdoor seating, we sell ice cream, we wanna, we wanna have an inviting atmosphere, so people can come in with their families, find a place to park and not have to worry about backing, backing up and getting hit by a car in the queue. That's, that's the biggest problem, it's a nightmare.
So, so being that person on the sidewalk, I just would like to know how close that, that drive is to the sidewalk? If there's enough of a safety zone there.
You mean here at this point?
Oh, she means by the, by the, by the, where our existing drive-through sign is.
Between the sidewalk and the-
Right, the back of the sidewalk, Paul, too.
Yeah, it's about ten feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, this room.
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
So you're losing the tree?
Yeah, the tree's gone.
You might want to replace it.
She's maybe willing to be a little bit closer to that driveway.
No, I knew, because there's, because there's an elevation change, um, right there, that, that it was probably gone anyways, you just didn't mention it.
Tom, did you have, oh, are you done with it?
No, I, I just, uh, from, I, I understand Tom's point in number fourteen about narrowing the curb cut from, I think, what's forty presently, right, to thirty-two?
Forty or a little over, maybe.
Yeah, is that something that you folks are, are comfortable with, or are you, uh?
I, no, I'd like to keep it forty, because if someone's coming from the other way, from like the prison, let's, let's say they're driving a Cadillac like I do, you have a nice turn, and there's no issue.
Yeah, you know what?
That side's twenty feet wide.
That seems like a small forty, because it just doesn't feel that big there.
It's really only eight feet, it's, it's like so small. I have it on my phone, it's, it's- I really think it'd, it would have no impact to pedestrians.
Right.
Personally, I mean, the gas station next door has, and they're, they have very little sidewalk, they're, they're- Their bays are huge. And if you see a car coming, they're gonna stop for you.
No, I think, I think having the better swing into the new drive-through proposed would make sense.
I'm comfortable with that as well. Um, another question, um, on the new plan, in essence, the, the bypass doesn't occur till up here, right? This is width enough to get out of the queue if you wanted to, and sneak between the queue and the back of these parking spaces, is that right?
Right, yep.
Okay, alright, that's what I would, whoops.
Speeding over.
I do think seeing a landscaping plan would be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the only lands, the only landscape, the only landscape we're adding is, is, um, we're gonna put an island to block off. Yeah, that, that's the only thing we're doing.
But it would be nice to see what changes are happening here, what changes are happening here. So, you know, there are several conditions that are changing from how they are now. It would be nice to see that reflected in what the new plan is gonna look like. Because it might be that we wanna, you know, throw some more shrubs in certain areas or something.
We like throwing shrubs, so, no problem.
I'm Seth Steve, thanks.
Tom, do you have any questions?
Did you call me Tom again?
Oh, Tom, Jeff.
And he's not even sitting next to me, so I just called me Tom.
I know, I'm not even looking at him.
I, you know, I would say that, um, we're at a point where I'm not sure things can be optimized beyond, you know, what we've got here. You know, there are a couple things with the design that aren't ideal. Probably acceptable, um, I think, you know, if this was a, a new development, you were putting in, you know, bricks and mortar and type thing, I'm not sure that I would, um, support a couple of the things that I think that we might be willing to support tonight, is, is, that's my take on it. I don't know that anything rises to the level of me not being able to, to support it. I would say there was some concerns about stormwater that I think, you know, should definitely be, um, addressed. Perhaps some further study there, I, I don't know, Tom. Did, I didn't see those comments, um, in Bob McGee's review, but that doesn't mean that they're not valid.
Yeah, I, I actually didn't see Bob's review, but, uh...
He, he brought up the concern with, um, regard to the limited bypass on the, the portion of the property, I guess, furthest, uh, south. Which I think, is that about four car lengths, that section of the queue, um, on the edge of the property?
Right in here?
Yeah, uh, no, actually, that portion right there, yeah, is that about four car lengths there?
They have a plan that has a few, count the cars, yeah.
They have one, two, three, four, well, yes, four along here.
Yeah, and so, and I, and I think I, I should speak to this, because I've raised this as an issue with other, uh, projects, but I think now you're at a manageable number, where if someone, you know, if someone knows that they have some time constraint, what have you, they're not gonna get in the line in the first place if it's back that far. So I think, you know, the amount of time that someone could be in a situation where they really have to get out of line, I think it's, um, it's very limited there, because you're dealing with a fairly small number of car lengths. And, you know, I felt I needed to speak to that, because I've had issues with other, um, other projects where there's a greater number of cars, um, which would certainly be a concern in terms of the lack of bypass.
Yeah, we, I mean, right, right, we have, yeah, we have the turn, right when you make that turn, it's just, the bypass is right there, so. And the car, the cars are moving so fast, I mean, we're averaging a minute thirty-five from the beginning of the year, total time from menu board to the window, so it's, I mean, it's pretty fast.
I think in Bob McGee's, they had, he had recommended a, a jump-type curbing, but, you know, I don't know whether or not it would be necessary. I think that they'd be in that area for what, five, six minutes or something?
Oh, not even.
I, I don't know what a jump, what is a jump curbing, Tom?
Not a term I'm familiar with.
Oh, okay.
I presume it means a curb that can be jumped.
That won't cut your tires, yeah.
That will rip your bumper off as you go over it.
Otherwise known as a speed bump.
Is that it, Tom? I mean, Jeff.
Did, did we receive anything from, uh, the police chief?
I think we may have in the past, right? Because there's a reference to-
If you go back far enough, because I think he raised this as an issue, which I think is why the project is being, one of the reasons why the project is being- I don't think we've received anything recently, is what you're saying, yeah, okay.
They're rec, it, it, Bo, uh, both Bob McGee and the police chief, he's, he's referencing the police chief, has also recommended removing the first parking spot. That would allow for more reaction time.
That was a previous layout, parking man.
But it, but isn't it the same?
This is much wider.
Oh, is it wider?
Much wider than it was.
It's like twenty feet wide.
The, the only thing that I, I want- The, the only thing that I, I wanted to, um, mention, and, and Jeff had mentioned it also, is the, uh, the, uh, that, um, there, there was, uh, a lot mentioned about stormwater, and, and there's a lot of extra, there's a lot of extra paving over there. Uh, where are you planning on catching that extra paving? Is that being directed towards the existing drainage, or?
Back here it is, yes.
Yeah, so, all that, all that extra drive there, it's all gonna flow towards that, that drainage?
Yes, from about, from about this point.
And where's the, where's the, uh, the other part going?
That's going in this direction.
Out onto the street.
Well, no, you said it was, did you say you were putting-
Go.
Well, I do have a catch basin showing here.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, oh, okay.
But didn't, um, suggest maybe moving it to catch a little bit more at the parking area?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the, virtually that entire parking, the main parking area, she flows out on the street, which it, it's an existing condition, but-
It is an existing condition.
It goes into that, to that, that drain hole, I'll buy-
But if this is being added, maybe you add it in a more strategic fashion, so that it can pick up some of this as well as-
No, we don't, no, we don't.
Yeah, Tom's saying what the, the one that's out on the street is being moved, is that what you're saying, Tom?
Yes, I think there was one shown on the existing conditions plan.
Wait a second, you're not doing something in the street?
No, 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 it, it-
I think it's another base there, right, right in the middle of the, between the two poles.
Meaning the driveway?
I, I'm not sure exactly where the one on the street is that he's talking about.
Right, but there's no on-street construction.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Except for, except for a cutting part of the car.
It's going to the, to that drain, there is a drain, a basic, right between the two pole lights there. So, we don't, uh, create any more water.
Yeah, but, but whatever the, the drainage is that's going from the middle of the parking lot to the rear of the property is being cut off by the, uh-
Return to the proposed watershed plan, please.
Oh.
Um, I have it here, I have it here.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, you put, with the new berm across the back of the parking lot, that's getting blocked. Where's it ending up? I mean, is there a way to basically have some type of?
You'd probably have to connect another drain in there.
The, the best way to do it is put in a structure.
But unfortunately, that's where the septic is though, too.
I, well, we didn't know what septic is, but, um, but I, I don't know what clears it right now, yeah. If-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What it, what is shown on here, these are flow arrows, and they're shown flowing out onto the street.
The existing conditions.
That's proposed.
Oh, all of it is proposed to flow out onto the street?
That's what that plan is telling me. Except, here is the drainage divide, and this goes backwards, and there's nothing for it. So, there's two issues. One, it's shown entirely flowing out into the street, and two, the back half of the parking lot has no place to go.
But, that's my, that's without him, with no planned manhole.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we-
But there is a catch basin.
There is a catch basin here.
We, we had a catch basin around the, on the entrance of the parking lot, and the town took it away from us, when they, uh, did the master plans down there.
When they did the sidewalks?
Right, right, right there, it was one for us, then the town took it away when they did the master plans.
Hmm.
Well, we're, we're really talking about the back of the parking lot, not the front of the parking lot, because the front of the parking lot's in existing conditions, so we're just, we're not planning on changing that.
But, where's the break on this, uh, so there's your flow.
This is the flow right-
Okay, now, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna get blocked off by that new berm, um, on, on the new drive-through. Is there a creative way for that to get through there, rather than structure it?
I could either put a catch basin here to pick it up.
Do you have an overlay for, uh, Paul, with a, uh, with the septic? Because, uh, is that? Are we sitting on the septic there?
Yes, the septic system's ready.
So, you're not gonna put a structure in there?
Right, yeah.
So, how do we sneak it through?
You can put just a hole in the island and let it flow through. The problem is that ice tends to accumulate there in the winter and then it doesn't flow through. But if you can't put a structure, that's the only other thing to do, is just put a cut through in the island.
Being the board of health consultant, how many structures do you see in the meeting field?
Uh, not that many, fortunately, and, and-
All right.
Well, this could be regraded to go out this way, too. Yeah, well, you could do that, yeah. It's on this. Yeah.
Well, you could be creative on your drainage, I, I do have a, a, a question on the lighting, though, because Tom brought that up also, oh, did you bring it up?
This is the greatest.
That, Tom?
Yeah, but, yeah, you could, you could probably just overlay that back part.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of, it's bringing it out this way.
It's probably the easiest. It's better than cutting a hole in the island, and you can't put a structure there, so. I'd just regrade it.
Oh, oh, to regrade it so that it goes towards the front, yeah, oh, okay. And, and, and Tom, you had some comments on the lighting, too, so-
Well, you know, it, it, we didn't have any detailed information on how the existing lighting worked. We thought maybe because the existing, there's a couple of lights that end up in the island, but I think they're existing, and- These are existing. Yeah, so as long as they're full distribution lights, so maybe you just change the head or something, as long as those lights have a three hundred and sixty-degree dispersion of light, then they should be adequate. The poles should be adequate for the drive-through.
We're gonna add a, there's a two header, three header, just an added head for each.
That'd be fine.
That's all you gotta do.
Oh, all right.
Simple fix.
Okay, are we done with questions from the board? Okay, any, um, questions from the public? Nobody? All right, so, when do we wanna come back? You know everything that, that, that we're looking at, right?
You'll have that dumpster detail when you come back, hopefully.
That can be part of like your landscaping detail and stuff.
Yeah, even just move the dumpster away, it's now, it's gonna be all fenced around, and if you, you feel comfortable, so you can put some miracle ins around, you can still do it.
Well, you wouldn't want evergreens on that.
No, we, I mean, we, we, we would just, we would just move it and put the same fence we have right now, we would just move it.
Yeah, it's gonna be all fenced around, it's more visible to, uh, to, uh-
I think some kind of landscaping around it, around it is probably-
Yeah, we can do something.
Don't you have some plants around the existing one right now?
Uh, hmm, no, just the trees behind it, though.
Yeah, there's some trees back here.
But, I mean, we can put something.
But, you would access it from the front, from-
No, you can't, because there's an island too close. You'd have to, you'd have to have the trash truck come through the drive-through and pick it up this way, because you can't do it from the street side.
Oh, they'd have to back up to it?
No, you, you, you don't want the opening on the street side, because the trash truck be sitting in the street. There's not room this way to pick it up, because there's an island right here, there. So, you're gonna have to have the opening on the side, so the trash truck is either gonna have to back in and take it out that way, or else goes in the drive, but, but the, the opening, I think, has to be on the site's side.
All right, yes?
My, my suggestion, and the dumpster company's suggestion, was to have it angled, so they can come in real early in the morning through Carlson, pick it up, and leave when there's no one there.
So, you're saying-
That's the most ideal.
Something like this.
Yes, correct, that's the most ideal way.
So, anyway, detailing your thoughts about that and how that corner looks, I think would be important.
Yeah. So, how long will it take you to come back?
Next meeting?
When is our next meeting? Three eighteen? You wanna be on for three eighteen?
Sure.
Let me see, agenda items for three eighteen, eight, eight fifteen, eight thirties, eight forty-five, nine?
Nine thirty.
Yeah, yeah, we're probably looking, well, we will go for nine fifteen, just in case, but-
That's very optimistic.
But that's optimistic, yes.
You should probably consider him at seven fifty-five, there might be a continuance on the following.
Oh, 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 that's very true, that's very true.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, how about, uh, like, seven, seven fifty-five on the, on March eighteenth?
Earlier the better, that's, thank you.
All right.
You put it earlier, even if you're later, you can start it until later.
Right.
So, okay.
So, we can do all these things, and, uh, we, 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 you know, just, everybody feel comfortable, ourselves, we're gonna spend the money, and everybody else, make the, uh, the idea of a town, and, and it makes everybody comfortable, you know, customers and everybody else.
So, it's just, it's just the, the landscaping detail and then to figure out a catch basin, right? That's the only issue?
We, I'd like to see the signage, too, the types of signs that you're gonna use for directing.
The, the drive-through sign that we have right now, we're just gonna flip it and put it up to where we're closing off. I think Paul showed it on the plan. The exit sign's not moving.
Here, we're, we're moving it up to-
It's moving.
It, it's where right now?
It's right in the front of the store, the entrance.
But where's the menu board gone?
That's, that's not-
You're not moving that again, are you?
We're ju, we're just, we're just, we're tilting it, because we're adding a spot right there next to it.
Okay. 'Cause it's, what, six months?
No, we don't move it.
Yeah, no, we just, we're tilting it a little bit.
It was beautiful, so I wish we move it.
So, you, you say a catch basin, but it could be more general than that, because we talked about maybe some changes in terms of the, you may have to put a top course of asphalt or something.
Maybe more.
Okay, so this is going to be continued until, uh, seven fifty-five on March eighteenth.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Ooh, seventy-seven Rockwood Road, eleven Stacy Road, request for another continuance, huh?
They are meeting with conservation on the, well, they're ready to meet with them.
Oh, okay. So, they were-
That we, uh, continue the public hearing for seventy-seven Rockwood Road, eleven Stacy Road Estate Lot Special Permit to March eighteenth at eight forty-five P M.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gary Hunt, to discuss green energy subdivision. Let me see, is it, uh, oh, yeah, we're well beyond eight fifteen. Yeah. Yes, Bob.
I don't know that you know this, but you'll find it out, on zoning bylaws, there's going to be, the select's hearing is next Tuesday. If we're going to have Gino make any changes, or we're going to just continue, you just need to focus on somehow communicating that, so that it's known before next Tuesday when the select will discuss zoning bylaws.
Now, the, uh, now, you sent in the updated version last night, right?
I haven't sent the updated version to you then, because we're gonna talk tonight.
Yeah, we are gonna talk about it tonight, but that, but, you know, if, if we're gonna send it in, we'll send in the updated one. If we're gonna withdraw it or anything, then we'll withdraw the updated one.
Right, the point I'm making is that I'm not doing it.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, we'll send in the updated one, then, all right.
Good evening.
Hi there. So, you're here for a, uh, green energy subdivision off Myrtle Street, Myrtle and Gold Street. If you could just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Gary Hunt.
Is this Mr. Chair?
Yes.
He needs to, no, the rules. I thought you said you're on microphone, but they're, uh, cables, so.
Well, um, I'll first introduce ourselves, uh, my name is Gary Hunt, um, this is my partner Joseph DePietro, Roger Singh, and Bob, Bobby Gill. We are here, um, to, A, introduce ourselves, tell you a little bit about ourselves, uh, let you know a little bit of what we're trying to do and why we're interested in Norfolk. If you don't mind, I just have a couple of pieces of information, I don't have one for every, um, member.
We'll share over here.
Yeah, we can share, so it's just two about who we are, um, and then just some information regarding the property that we're interested in.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you're more familiar, um, with that, uh, than who we are, so, quickly, um-
Yeah, come on in close.
All of us here, we have a-
That's okay, we're, we're all set.
So, all of us here, we have a passion, um, for green energy, as well as protecting the environment and doing things in the most cost-productive and environmentally-friendly manner. We're all passionate about educating the population about what we're here to do and doing them, and doing these things in the appropriate manner. So, what we're here to do is, A, educate you a little bit about what we wanna do and how we're gonna do it, um, and also talk to you about the, the land and the property that we're interested in doing some work on. We are- So, what we'd like to do is basically draw attention to Norfolk, uh, with this project. Essentially, these are new and these are unique structures, um, they're different than your traditional stick frame. They incorporate a bunch of new and existing, uh, old, uh, technology that's already current, um, and in the knowledge base. So, this unique and quality product that we're trying to present to you incorporates a different, uh, many different pieces of the puzzle. I'll just quickly go over them, uh, some of you are probably familiar with these methods. Um, the first, um, difference from stick frame, uh, construction is the envelope of the building, which is insulated concrete forms, and we brought a couple examples of what the envelope or the foundation of these homes that we're trying to produce, um-
I've seen that on this old house.
Okay. So, not only, um, is it safer, stronger, sound-resistant, more fire-retardant, but it also restricts moisture, mold, um, any carcinogens, insects as well. Uh, so, these essentially insulate the, the structure more so than any type of insulating foam or fiberglass panels, uh, that may be currently in place.
Back up just a second, I don't understand what that is, explain it.
So, if you wanna consider this like a Lego block, um, the foundation would be laid with these pieces, and they'd also be stacked on top of each other with rebar for, um, with rebar that would go horizontal first.
And then you'd pour concrete between them?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, I guess, obviously those are not strung out the whole of the house, I'm trying to figure out what you're doing there.
This rebs here, whole, called the rebar.
Yes, okay.
What, the wood, as well as horizontal.
Understood, okay, fine.
And the styrofoam is just an insulator.
Yeah, right.
Um, and then obviously the exterior, you know, you, if you wanted whatever facade you'd like, um, there's attachments, um, where, you know, you put the exterior of the home, uh, to look whatever way you'd like. So, the second, after the envelope of the, of the structure is complete, then the next step to becoming net zero, our, our company name is Solid Net Zero. We strive to make, um, any home or building that we do, um, as energy efficient, uh, not using any resources from the grid as possible, so, we go to solar. Um, everybody thinks, you know, solar is part of a solution, and that is part of the puzzle, um, in our eyes. And we were actually pretty pleased to hear that there's already a solar farm in Norfolk. Um, it shows that you guys are a little bit more forward-thinking, um, like ourselves, um, as well as some of the mercury recovery programs, um, so it's very good for us to hear, um, and see that. And Bobby can quickly, um, talk to you about the solar, uh, that we plan on doing, uh-
My reminder-
Sorry, Bob.
My name is, uh, Bob Gill, and, uh, I'm a electromechanical engineer by trade. And, uh, just for, just to form a visual clue as to what we do exactly, I brought a few, few improvements, and, uh, you guys could have, have a look at it, these are plates of the batteries that you could, uh, have a look at, as well as, this is a full-fledged battery that we found in our building that was built in nineteen ten. This, this battery was built by Thomas Edison, right? And this battery still has a charge in it, after all these years, it is still working. You can, uh, bring it down, wash it, clean it out, refill it with, uh, alkaline solution, and run back like new again. You can charge it up to the heights, and you can drain it down to the bottom. Try doing that with the lead-acid battery, you'll never be able to do that. This battery, after a hundred years, is still valid.
What's the chemistry of it?
It's an alkaline, uh, the plates are made of, uh, nickel, and I- And this, this here are some of the, uh, ad, ad pieces that were used over the years. And this was some of the motives. Just to form a visual, uh-
Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
J, J Leno, whenever he brings his electric vehicle out of his garage, these are the batteries that are in there.
He's running, okay.
You know, J Leno's cars run on these batteries. And, um, just to get, give a small, uh, history on the batteries here, in nineteen seventy-five, this company- In nineteen seventy-five, this company was sold to Excite Batteries. When Excite Battery, after, as soon as they signed on the bottom line, in New Jersey, they shut down the whole factory. They just buried the factory. And these batteries are no longer built in the United States anymore. Because, just wrap your head around it for a minute, this are batteries that last forever. Lead acids last you, if they last you five years, you're happy. All right, so because it was a business proposition, they did, they did away with it. Well, this is just one facet of it. The other facet of, uh, of our project is, uh, LEDs. And, uh, this uses less than half the energy of, uh, of this, the fluorescent tubes that we got here. And it produces one and a half times more light.
Also, it doesn't have any mercury.
And it doesn't have any mercury. And all the pro, programs that you guys are spending money on to do the mercury abatement, this care, this takes care of it with no money.
So what is, the, the bulb technology on that?
Yeah, it is bulb technology.
What, what is that technology?
It is, uh, uh, light emitting diodes.
So it's LED.
LED, LED lights. Now, this, this bulb is warranted for twenty-five years to start. And when you're done after twenty-five years, if you outlast this bulb, when it's done, you can bring it down to the junkyard and get a cash value for it. Because there's aluminum content here that you can recycle. All right, so this, this are some of the technologies that we're using. And, uh, and I'll bring it back to Gary and, uh.
My name is Roger Singh. I'm C E O of the company. And, uh, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak. We are all extremely passionate about green energy. The financial aspect is secondary because we know that, that would come automatically. But our is the passion. So what Bob just alluded to, the batteries, the significance of battery, because, uh, you know, we, so far, if solar hasn't taken off, one of the main reason, because in the nighttime, there's no sun. And that is the very strong argument against, uh, uh, you know, against the solar. So these battery and other side is that, okay, so we have regular lead acid batteries. So we all know in our cars, we have to change every three, four years. And imagine, you know, if we have the household, they have Banco batteries every five years, we're not gonna have enough space, any, any place that we can dispose them off. And this, the, the reason for this, uh, bringing out this old technology, these technologies are not any proprietary or anything. We are trying to bring old, forgotten, buried technologies out because they were sound. No company is interested in touching and developing these because there's no intellectual property. And so that is the reason, you know, that they have not even touched any, uh, any use for these. So therefore, uh, what we are trying to do is to bring out this technology for the, because they are sound technologies. So if you look at that, our, uh, idea is to make, give you the comprehensive solution. Because, uh, in order to take care of the demand, electricity, uh, energy demand of the, uh, you know, a home, you probably need, uh, mm, you know, maybe one football field worth of solar panels. So that's not economical and not affordable, not feasible. So what we are trying to do is first of all, uh, have the better envelope, reducing, uh, using LEDs, using pretty much all of the bow to reduce the load, uh, up to that critical point where you can have, we can have the smaller units, smaller affordable units. And they can make the final leap for the net zero. So this is the, right.
What, what, what would you propose to heat the, uh, place with?
Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
What would you propose to heat the structure with?
The heating, the heating part would be, uh, geothermal. Because we're looking at, uh, is a holistic approach that where, uh, you know, we utilize the sustainable, uh, geothermal is, you know, problem. So these energies are very sound and that's where you use, uh, pretty much all of the above, but you use in such a way where it makes comprehensive solution. And matter of fact, uh, once we have in our household, all of the systems are extremely small. I had just, uh, my team, uh, we, uh, my friend of mine, he works, uh, uh, these I C F homes in Wayland, Massachusetts. And, uh, we went to one of his house named Toaster Home. And, uh, outside, it was snowing and freezing cold. And, uh, as soon as we pulled in the driveway, Gary commented, Roger, look at, uh, the air conditioning, your size of the air conditioning unit. It was probably somebody's suitcase, small suitcase. And, uh, extremely interesting, as soon as we walked in. Uh, you know, within five, matter of five minutes, you know, we had to take our jackets off because the house was so warm, toasty. And, uh, uh, good thing was radiant heat. The water was, uh, you know, from the hot water. Uh, he had, uh, uh, you know, one, two days, uh, one day ago that he had started fire in his, uh, fireplace. And the house was absolutely toasty. And, uh, it was just maintaining throughout the house, throughout entire house, it was maintaining very comfortable temperature, starting eighty-five, ninety, uh, you know, at your, uh, foot level. And then coming at seventy all across. And, uh, then he, we took us out, as soon as we walked out, we suddenly felt we needed jackets again. So we saw panels sitting outside on the roof. And I asked him, I said, how much utility bill you get? He said, what bill? I don't get any bill. Only thing I'd get, uh, sometime I get, uh, some rebate check, you know, from, uh, you know, sending the electricity, surplus electricity from, uh, from the grid. And, uh, so that's what we kind of started, we have the net zero. Net zero is not an issue that we can do and we can achieve, you know, that's not the issue. Our goal is to whether we can send, how much money, money is not, probably not an issue, but making a statement that we want to make, uh, you know, better home, better alternate for the consumers and better for environment. I think it's a win-win situation. And, uh, again, once again, I thank you so much for that.
So just to encompass, you know, what he said, it's, it's, it's a, it's a full circle, the, the envelope, um, and everything he spoke about. So that's what we're trying to do. On our end, it costs slightly more, but at the same time, we recoup those expenses by having a smaller H VAC unit, um, getting, getting grants or rebates, et cetera, so. And, and the fact that the load is so, so significantly lower, um, all of that compensates for any type of, um, increased instruction, uh, construction costs on our end. That pretty much summarizes who we are, you know, what we're trying to do, the processes we're trying to utilize. Not sure if you have any questions for us at this point.
Is this your first attempt at doing this?
This is our fir-, this is our first project. We're currently, my mother was actually just, uh, elected mayor of Windsocket, Rhode Island. Um, and they're obviously not as forward-thinking as, as Norfolk is. However, she's trying to bring, um, a change to the city in every regard and dynamic. So, um, we are currently waiting, um, for the funds to build a state-of-the-art animal shelter, uh, in Windsocket, Rhode Island. So whether this project comes along as our first project or whether that comes along as our first project, um, you know, we have things lined up and we're trying to get things lined up just to get off the ground. Um, you know, we obviously are drawn to Norfolk by, um, primarily some, um, you know, your, your forward thinking as well as the, the market, um, for these potential types of homes as well as just the value of homes in general in Norfolk.
What square footage would you think of these homes as being, said maybe on the smaller side?
We would, we would like to keep it on the smaller side because everything is, you know, we're conserving as much, that, that's, that's the outlook is you conserve, you save, you moderate, um, you don't do anything unnecessary. So there's no set limit as to what we're, you know, we're with it, we're encompassing. However, we, we would, we actually had the envision of maybe two to twenty-five hundred square feet, um, homes. Two, two thousand to twenty-five hundred.
Now, the, the I C F homes, I mean, as compared to stick-built homes, what are the I C F homes? What, what are they constructed out of? Is this something where there's, you know, it's, it's all to code and everything that's, uh, that's, that, that there's not gonna be any problem getting it by the building department or anything, is there?
No.
They, they exceed codes, uh, pretty much everywhere. Uh, you know, in fact, uh, in fact, uh, you know, they, uh, on the waterfront, you know, they have the hurricane and that's where these houses. They, 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 they exceed the code even, uh, at those, so pretty much is well-accepted, uh, throughout, uh, United States.
Well, we got the foundation, but what's, what do we replace the sticks with?
This, so.
Oh, it's the same system for the entire house?
The entire home.
Oh, okay.
From the foundation up.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's all port concrete? Or it's all port, you know. For lack of a better word, it's almost building, uh, a prison.
It's a thermal mass.
Right.
Better than a prison.
So ju- just for, uh, for perspective, um, you know, what I like about this is I think we're talking about, these are private monies. This isn't a commitment that you're looking for from the town to use taxpayer dollars to support these concepts, right? Is that, is that true? I mean, this is a private enterprise and you are, um, approaching the market with the expectation that there are sufficient number of, um, consumers, people looking for homes, that are willing to pay the ten to twelve percent higher cost for, for the houses that you would propose to build, correct?
Correct.
It's as simple as that, correct?
Correct, and even just to go a little further, we were actually originally looking at, um, different communities that had commuter rail stations that, um, go through the, uh, go through the town or city based, uh, based off of our, uh, research that commuters are more energy efficient savers, they have a, um, or, or, or people that take a train, for instance. They're, they're trying to save, uh, their cost of gas, uh, traveling time, et cetera. So having, um, a location that is even in close proximity is only, um, a, a plus for us in regards to who we're trying to attract.
Okay. Um, the other point that I wanted to make, um, is that, you know, I think the town has always been interested in new ideas and, you know, these concepts, we're gonna be hearing more and more of them as technology evolves. So, um, I think that's wonderful. I think the, the concern that a, a number of people in the, the town have had in the past is that there was an interest or an expectation that the town would, um, perhaps, um, codify the requirements and make these requirements in the form of a stretch code, if you will, a building code. And, uh, you know, there's significant concern, I think, even today in terms of whether or not the town of Norfolk wants to codify these requirements. But the fact that you're not asking the town to do that, you know, you're looking at building homes and.
Right.
Marketing them to people that are pa, as passionate about energy conservation as you are, and they have to have the means to, to pay for it.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, you know, certainly important in this, in this situation. And the other thing that I would point out is that we have a technology committee that was very active until recently in, uh, working with, um, our school department, basically school committee. We built a new school here, we're very proud of, the Freeman Kennedy School. And those folks, um, know a whole lot more than I do in terms of, you know, clean energy concepts and such. So it may be worthwhile you speaking with them. We've got some sharp folks that did a lot for the town and really, you know, helped us construct a school that we're all very proud of. So that may, those may be resources that you should reach out to and get their perspective.
Can you just repeat that one more time?
I think you said the technology committee, it's the energy committee?
It's the energy committee.
Okay.
I mean, uh, are they still meeting? I know they were really busy with the school. They probably aren't meeting as frequently as they were.
They met last week.
They did, okay.
Anybody have any?
The, obviously, this is building department materials, but I appreciate you coming in because it's fascinating, including the folklore, history part of it. What, as it pertains to a planning board, what is your plan? I see two different plans in this handout here. Have you guys, it may be premature, but do you have, um, engineered plans or do you have a ideal layout that you're gonna be going with?
So I would say, honestly, this might be a little premature. We, um, we visited the property, we met with the realtor of the property and the landowners, um, to get a firsthand glimpse. And, you know, we've basically been going off of the information they've provided.
Okay, so these are their previous layouts?
This is, this is, yes, this is what I guess supposedly was proposed or, um, drawn up.
I don't remember ever seeing this one. Do you, have you seen this one? I like this layout for Gold Street, I don't remember.
Oh, Gold Street, okay.
I, I don't remember ever seeing this. This is a good layout for, for Gold Street.
Is that the one with?
No matter what, you're gonna be in the zone two.
No, he's looking at the one without the combs.
Okay.
So you, you know, because the well is not far from there.
Right, yeah, we are made aware of that. And, and I believe that the specs on those sheets, um, you know, take that into account where it's, that, that part of the parcel is left alone.
Yes.
You can't touch it.
Right.
And the other part, if, if you are relatively new, especially coming out of Rhode Island, I don't know if you're all from there, but, you know, there's, there's regulations where you may be limited to the number of bedrooms depending on the, the setback from the well, so.
The size isn't that, um, that much of the importance to us, you know, we're, we're looking to have the houses, you know, mesh with the community, um, be up to code and to your standards. We'd like to take the advice from, from you guys as to, you know, what's, what's the common size of the homes there? What, what are the families like? You know, any feedback as to, you know, what you feel like would be a best seller in terms of size, you know, we would be open.
Again, but, you know, we're kind of reverting back to the, uh, the, the structures themselves. I was, I was speaking more to you, say if you're in a zone two.
Okay.
To a public water supply, you're limited to one bedroom every ten thousand square feet of land.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to plan that accordingly, you know, in, in your, in your layout.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the plans that closely, but whoever you get, if you're engineer, just make sure you tell them that you're, you're in the zone two.
Okay, great.
I think it's fourteen acres there, I think that's what they said.
Right, but, you know, a chunk of it gets taken away by the, uh, zone one.
Yeah.
I don't want them planning on seven lots and then get sideswiped down to four.
Lots look roughly fifty-five thousand square feet on the smallest, smaller ones.
Okay, so they're all at least.
And I must say that, you know, our interest is the five lots. Um, we wouldn't necessarily be interested in doing less than that. At the same time, we're also interested, you know, if this isn't the best fit, uh, we're open to other, um, suggestions. However, you know, we've put in some work and some time and thought and planning as to, um, what might happen if this type of layout was, uh, approved or.
But if you've already, if you've already got some preliminary engineering done.
Right.
But in the state lot doesn't really go hand in hand with a solid net zero passionate principle.
Why, is there a state lot in there?
Yeah, lot four or five is an estate, right?
Okay.
It's a little bit of, I mean, you could still make this work.
Right. Well, I, I think it works, I mean, there's one estate lot, yeah.
It's totally a principle thing, it's not, not a practical.
That's fine.
I C F is an acronym for?
Insulated concrete forms.
Uh, w- w- one thing that I, uh, ask you. That we are, uh, not necessarily, you know, married to this land, you know, I mean, this particular, uh, parcel. We are looking at the very initial stage because we wanna make this a showcase, a national showcase with, uh, uh, you know, people come from the political spectrum, people from environmentalist, I mean, all kind of good things that we want to bring. This is our desire. And, uh, uh, you know, that we don't want to limit ourselves having been just a small, that may not give the proper punch for, uh, you know, that what we are trying to accomplish. Because I C has been around for quite, uh, a long period of time. The problem has been it, uh, that it's not much of awareness. So we want to get, uh, good environmental, educational group where, uh, they can present to, you know, state first of all, then at the national level. So our goal is to get a very good type of land where, uh, you know, that we can showcase that something.
High profile.
Something high-profile, something unique, unique. So any suggestions, uh, that, uh, any feedback, any assistance in that matter, uh, that would be highly appreciated. That, uh, we are not stuck on just one, this land altogether. So we, this is just very initial stage and that was just to start the conversation and.
Think we could interest them in a grocery store?
I, I think that this is an excellent location. I mean, it's, it's walking distance to the, the, the train station and there's a lot of open space around these houses.
I mean, no, it is, it's a nice spot, a lot of traffic goes by there.
Well, on, on one road, yeah. And usually on Saturdays, right?
Couple other questions. Couple other questions. Expanded concrete, is that the nature of the concrete that's going inside the forms? You know, where aluminum is used to, you know, it's passivated inside the concrete to create a more.
It is, the concrete that they normally pour into it is, is, is not a specialized form of concrete, any old concrete, but it has to be the slurry, so it flows.
Microphone.
It doesn't necessarily have to be any kind of special concrete, as long as it flows.
Okay.
Now, a lot of this was pretty popular down south, especially in Texas years ago, and it became a huge mold issue because of the, the drying issue. It was probably like any newer technology, you know, it came, came back. But, I mean, I remember the, the claim situation that came up with it because it never set or cured right.
Against the styrofoam?
Or, I, I'm not exactly sure the actual cause of it.
Don't forget, this, all, all of these materials that we're using in here are inert materials. They're inorganic materials that are used in here. You know, the co- concrete is inorganic. The styrofoam is inorganic, post-consumer waste, and the ribs in there are post-consumer as well. And the iron is.
It was either that or maybe a stucco facing to it.
It is what is added onto it, any, any, any facade from outside the interior, exactly the same.
Just, just curiosity, again, one more dirt than structure, but you have me fascinated.
Perhaps, perhaps you answered these questions in the, in the literature, but are each of these houses individually net zero? Are they working off of the energy generated as a group?
No, th- these are all individual.
Each, each one of them will be independently net zero.
Indi- indi- independently.
So it doesn't need to be a, a homeowners association in order?
No, 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 none of that.
Even the geothermal will be individual to each site?
No, no, no.
Uh, that's something we are still determining. Ideal situation is that we have a geothermal. Because if, if this is like a mine, then you have to have some people just, you know, managing and, you know, taking care of that. And that can become an issue, but we want to have individual units, so they are at the small scale. And once you, once it gets like at the bigger scale, then all you get stuck with the same issues, you know, labor, employees, managing them, so and so forth, that, that can increase the cost. So we want to keep the systems as small as possible that they are easier to maintain and easier to maintain.
Geothermal, as I understand it, is you take certain amount of water out and you put that same amount of water back in the ground, is that right?
Not necessarily. Yeah, there are systems like that. There are closed-loop systems also. The, the system that we're going to be using is going to be closed-loop.
Closed-loop.
And the, the, you know, many part that we're going to be using is the fact that we're going to be tying. When we built the, when we dig into the foundation, that's when we're going to lay all our, the, all our ties for pipings and more heavy, not for geothermal, right? And if need be, we're probably using, utilizing the sewer area too, in some respects, if the areas are.
I don't know if this is a factor, but, you know, there is a well there that the town depends on, the Gold Street well. I don't know in terms of geothermal, if there is.
I, I, let, let me take that, that question. We are going to be using the closed loop. So pretty much you have the pipings and that, they're going, you know, and then you have the cold, cold water that goes back in, circulates through the ground, brings, bring out energy, and then you have the hot water. Because year round, the temperature is about fifty-five, sixty degree, so that's throughout the year. So matter of fact, it, it would never leave the closed loop that we have the food grade, you know, that antifreeze type. So it would never leave the, those pipings.
Nor, nor as Tom here says, will it, will it be a demand on any groundwater? That's, that's an issue.
And, and we were actually, when we did visit the property the first time, we were actually pleased to see that in two thousand and seven, across the street, there was fourteen acres that was purchased for nine lots. And as we drive by, all we see is wood. You know, they're constructing the whole house, you know, from wood. And whether it's the, the, the workers not being meticulous, or warping, or gaps in, in the structure itself, it's just good that we see, you know, directly who our competitor is and it's actually, it's refreshing to see that that's the, what we're trying to get away from, trying to set the new norm.
Do you have any photographs of what finished houses look like that you're proposing?
We could certainly get, get you some. You would be surprised that this doesn't look like some outer space, you know, building. It blends in with normal looking, I mean, it's, it's obviously more appealing to the eye, but in, in slight mannerisms, not a total like, wow, like what is that spaceship?
That might help your presentation.
From outside, they're exactly the same vinyl side if, if the consumer desires, or, you know, just brick or any stone.
And it, what size are you looking at? I mean, I, I know what the, what people have been, yeah, but, but the standard around here seems to be a little bit larger than it was when I moved into town.
I bet you they'd have a market for that.
There's also a market for a smaller house now.
Is there a market for smaller houses?
There's a market for a smaller tax bill.
Anecdotally, the larger houses are not selling as well.
Really?
That's looking for sustainable.
Your kids are through school. I know, but you're, you want a smaller house.
I think also if you're in the market for a sustainable solution, then you, you want a smaller footprint anyway. It goes with the whole philosophy and principle.
And actually, on the layout, I'm, I'm, we haven't even discussed this, but I'll just briefly bring it up. But one of the lots is about three and a half acres or three point two acres, where the other four is approximately one point two. So, you know, as we go along, maybe we could do a little larger home on that larger parcel that has more acreage, just a thought.
That's that estate lot I was.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure the.
Oh, yeah, he was asking about, is it, is natural gas?
Gas isn't there. It's only in certain parts of town. It's not there.
On the Medfield side, there's some gas that comes in from Medfield, and then we have some right in the center of town here.
But that's it.
It's, it's very limited.
Yeah.
And no sewer.
Long way, long way from that, that area.
Is there any, any need for, I mean, is there a need from the city that to have the gas put in?
I think they, they were talking about possibly bringing gas further into the center.
Right, but they made, they, they made, they pulled a gas main in the past year up to, like, as far as the library goes here, and they'll probably cut over it. I don't know if they've cut over this building yet. But they weren't ready to cross the tracks or make the further investment because there wasn't enough industrial draw.
I don't know what exists in Millis, but you're closest to the Millis line there, right?
I don't know where on that side where it goes. The sad thing is, all the mains go through all that section, you know? They go right down the, the high power lines, but no tap offs.
One other thing, I'm not, it's more of a half question, half statement, but when we had visited the property and the realtor and landowners spoke to us about the well, and the, in the area around it, they had said that the town at one point might have been interested in some of that land or utilizing it in some manner. And we're obviously open to working with the town in any regard, just for their benefit and, and ours if it means anything.
If you got further down the line and you were seriously considering that, you talked to Bob McGee, who's the DPW in charge of that.
Okay.
You know, maybe to be some.
He could be speaking of the fact that the land was offered to the community preservation.
I think that's what she might, yeah, the realtor might have mentioned.
There was a very, a very definite interest in this property for active ball fields because of the type of land it is. And you guys may not be familiar with this because you're not from the area, but this property, not only does it butt up against the well, which is, you know, of utmost importance, it also butts up against a trail system that is both on, ah, of course, I know, you know, I'm back. So it, it butts up on, on trails that are both on town land and on privately owned land. And when Steve was saying you could practically walk to the town center, he meant through that trail system.
Okay.
And one thing that this property does that, that's, oh man, no, 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 it's so much faster to go, to go through the woods.
Oh, really?
But one thing this property does, would provide is that those trails dead end and you have to loop. If, if you were okay with trespassing, you would have to loop across the back of this property in order to connect those trails together. So there's a, there's, there is a lot of active interest in those trails. So it's happening right near you, and that was, in addition to the ball fields, which may or may not be able to work with this property, with your development, the, the trail system would be.
Right, well, that's part of the old Midway grand.
You know that.
Trailway. I have used it. I, I've used it.
Yeah.
Not to walk through the drain, but I've been.
Now, why, why the, 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 the history of the batteries? I mean, that.
He's, he's a, he's a historian.
I mean, is there a, is, is there a new battery that you're sort of promoting here that they're going to start using?
No, you're using the old.
That's using the old technology?
Why, it's, you know, it's pointless reinventing the wheel. I mean, just, just going back to the dream line that Boeing built just lately, I mean, look at the fiasco, right? Just lately, Japan, Nippon Airlines, one of the planes, batteries heated up to twelve hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Flying, with, with passengers in it, as opposed to this here. This is time-tested, a hundred years old.
Who makes that now?
The Ja- the Chinese and the Russians.
Yeah, so they have, they, they, we have two companies that makes in the United States.
But, you know, that parts, I'm pretty sure they come from overseas.
So the application in your, in your process here, in your buildings here is?
Yes, 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 absolutely, because solar, just to make the solar viable, because then you can have the excess energy that gets stored and, you know, you can use in the nighttime.
So rather than sell it back at a discount to the grid, you keep it?
You, you, you would still be able to have, you know, but once, because once we have the net zero equation, then you should be, still be able to charge them and access, access energy that you can sell to the grid.
I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that because it's a single house unit, that the size of the battery isn't going to have to be that large.
Absolutely.
So can fit right in the basement of the house.
That, that is exactly right, because these batteries, they have very long life, I mean, forty years. This, this battery is about, I, I would say.
This is about a hundred years old.
About, yeah, and he brought it from a, a high-owned building in Wonsaka, Rhode Island, and that's from the five-story building and from the attic before Bobby, Bobby found.
I was, I saw a repair leak, and I had to crawl into that space and I found this battery.
And then he brought it downstairs and, you know, put the meter to it and it still registered a charge.
He was still, still working.
It's, it's mind-boggling. And, you know, that we have the sound technologies that are buried, and, you know, about a hundred years ago, they're talking about, they have the vehicles, they have the trams that those are, you know, carrying passengers.
I mean, if you look at the pictures here, I mean, the, the pictures here illustrate exactly what they are all about. I mean, tram systems, tram systems of yesterday.
Yeah.
J Lano still drives around in his vehicle, living proof, you know?
Just in case there is a storm or there's inclement weather, weather, and the, and the sun isn't out for three days, this is where they particularly come in handy, where they have a, you know, a power source that's, that's saved and charged. And if I'm not mistaken, our goal and our priority and what we strive to do and what we most likely will achieve is net zero. However, we're not here to tell you that every single month, you're not going to have one cent of an electric bill. It might be so miniscule that you don't even see it in your checking account. But like I said, the goal and the purpose is to be as close to net zero as possible. If not, on most occasions, or the majority of the time, or more than not, actually get, you know, something back to the grid.
But again, giving you direction as far as the layout, your subdivision plans, things like that, you know, don't reinvent the wheel. I would get in touch with whoever was the existing engineer on it and at least start there, you know, for a baseline, because they've done a lot of work that, you know, have to pay for from scratch with anybody else.
So, so i- is it safe to say that, that, that form of layout that didn't have the cul-de-sac in the middle is something that looks feasible, early stages?
I, I took a glance at it, looked perfectly feasible to me.
Can we get a big print there?
The only thing I recall about this property, and you may also, is it had a rare and endangered species, and there were certain areas that, certain subdivision areas, actually, there were, there were areas that were protected all the way throughout the property.
Really?
Oh, yeah. You remember that? There should be, I think it's called a conservation plan?
There might be some.
It's, I, it, it looks like this one. There should be, there should be little, there should be areas that were, I think it's about five acres that was held right off. Do you see that?
Well, this is five acres, but I think maybe.
No, 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 they were inside. They were like, see this area? And you see this area? Um, do you remember?
You're right, Andrea. Was it, was it there across the street where there's some wetlands that came up? You know, it may not be year-round, but.
You see how, you see how they, they've got these areas?
Quite some time now.
You've got to see this on a higher, on a, on a higher magnification.
Oh.
There's an area in here, there's an area over here, there's an area over here. It's, it's a rare, they're.
I remember it now. Yeah, I remember it now.
Well, these lots look large enough that they can avoid those areas.
Well, when you said, when you said which subdivision to go with, they should take into consideration one that's already, already gotten the sign-off from the endangered, from the natural heritage endangered species.
I don't, has anyone brought one to that point where they got any kind of a sign-off? I don't think anyone's gotten far enough on Gold Street to, to get to that point.
We, we saw a few versions of a project some years ago.
It went to MIPA. The project went to MIPA and got reviewed at the state level.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I don't remember, honestly, I don't remember if it was a preliminary subdivision or definitive subdivision, but I do know it's been reviewed at the state.
Well, most of the ones that came before has had.
This is Stivaleta.
A lot of problems with the, too long a cul-de-sac, and there were lots and lots of issues. This is the one that I see that is reasonable.
And if I'm not mistaken, I could be, but we were told that, was there an engineer, a town engineer that is no longer with you guys since maybe four years ago, five years ago?
We had a health agent, a health agent.
Oh, okay. We were told that somehow a director or an engineer had their hand somehow involved with the engineering aspect.
The firm that did the plan that you passed around is Kohler and Co. Antonio. They've been purchased by somebody, I think it's CHO now, but in addition to doing that plan, they were an engineer for the DPW.
Okay.
Here, Andrea, on this one, it's showing a no disturber area and a natural heritage spike on it.
That's probably the, it takes the majority of that estate lot.
Is that the same one?
No, they had like five different concepts, and this is the one that makes most sense. That's the one that was furthest along. However, what about this amount of land, if they could do open space?
That is true.
They could pick up another lot.
You'd be interested in another lot.
Well, they.
There's a lot of nuances. We could probably help you along once you get to that point, but I think, you know.
They have to have the, their plan as it exists, and they can get the same number of houses.
Right, but this is the one that's the furthest along?
It's the hay bales, isn't there? No disturb in here?
How many lots are shown on that, Michelle?
No disturb. And then there's no disturb over here as well.
So what we have is an provision in.
This is, this is the, this is the enlarged version of the one we saw. It's the same one.
Where you improve what you can do on a standard subdivision, and then if you turn it into an open space subdivision, you have more flexibility in sidelines as well, and you can bonus what is.
Frontage, can shrink your frontage.
So there's a lot more play in it. That's a good plan, especially as far as they've taken it. Your next step should probably be to call those deep.
Great.
And we're not pushing them because I don't even know who the engineer was.
Yeah, that's where we are going to start because, like I said, a lot of work.
A lot of work has been done on this already.
Left this unimproved.
While he's looking at the, the DPW, they.
I don't know, I don't remember.
This way would give an opinion on a project.
This would be called a, an emergency access.
Whether it's a site plan or subdivision, with that particular land, they were more involved because of the well. And so that's, you know, Kohler and Co. Antonio and various work was done because they wanted to make sure that they had adequate access and that there was no issue to, to the well and the quality of the water, I'm sure.
It was thoroughly, thoroughly thought out.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure anybody on this board ever reviewed those details. We generally don't, we rely. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure anybody on this board ever reviewed those details. We generally don't, we rely on. So, so the DPW, we have, uh, we call an enterprise fund for the, the water, uh, for those people in the town that depend on town water. Some people in town have wells, and some people depend on the town water. With the same individual, Bob McGee, he's the DPW director. He also is responsible for, you know, the water department. So, just to keep it, so you can keep it straight in terms of who these people are and why they've been involved. And it was Korea.
Yeah, it is Korea and Hannah.
So, you recall, we, we verified that the smarger side plan, you have the reduced, you have, you have that, yes, the full size, and you saw those no disturbed areas?
Yes.
And that's what it's about. It's about some little animal that I don't recall which one.
I think it might have been an insect.
Five acres. So, it's more than five acres.
A turtle?
It could have been, but I'm not, I don't really recall.
You know what, though? And this thing was, uh, as recent as, uh, April two thousand eleven.
Is that, is it definitive or preliminary?
I'm sorry?
This, yeah.
Oh, there was no definitive on. That came before this board. I do kind of remember seeing this, um, at least conceptually.
So, just so we're on the pa- same page, what we would expect is nothing more, nothing less than a conventional, you know, subdivision, or, you know, with an open space subdivision or something like that. So, if you were coming here and looking to build stick-frame houses, we would be having the same conversations, right, looking at these.
Our, our process is indifferent to the style of house.
Yeah, yeah. So, Tom said it clear. Tom said it clearer than I.
Yeah.
Jeff said that clearly.
But if you did an open space, I mean, if, if you wanted to, you could probably get all the houses off of Gold Street and have nothing out here on, on Myrtle Street, right? Because you could shrink the frontage down.
Yeah, but the area of the no disturb that they have.
Oh, is that the, uh?
These, these are all located strategically to stay outside of wetland buffers and no disturb areas. There's a lot of environmental sensitivities in this particular site.
I mean, the, the amount of engineering done on this is huge. Yes, it's already, it's already laid out. That, that's why I was saying, that looks like a really great place for, uh, uh, this type of, uh, development.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall, um, Michelle and I were having a, a side conversation over here. I don't really recall the, the layout of this, of the, um, the length of that, the length of that, um, drive and the back way out. I don't really recall that, um, if that was a good idea or not, because, and so I don't know the, I don't remember how that works.
Oh, yeah, how, how long is that cul-de-sac?
It's relatively long, and then, and Michelle, if you could point out what you pointed out to me.
Yep. So, it's proposing a cul-de-sac to here on Gold Street, and then it's leaving the remainder of Gold Street unimproved. This is the wellhead right here.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a right-of-way, but the, but the, but the town well is right in the right-of-way, so it doesn't make it all that accessible.
I see.
Yeah.
But in terms of the length of that road that would really be supporting the subdivision.
Well, this is four hundred feet. That's six hundred feet. That's a long cul-de-sac.
And then it goes into the, then it goes into the unimproved road, but whether or not you'd consider that an emergency access or not, I, I question that.
So, the cul-de-sac is as long as the cul-de-sac across the street?
So, it's four hundred and eighty six to here.
What cul-de-sac is across the street? Ariana Lane. Is it Ariana Lane or, is it across from, from here? Really?
Yeah, it's right down Midway.
Oh, okay.
So, you're seven sixty, seven hundred and sixty feet.
It's right here. Ooh, that's a long cul-de-sac.
There was a paper way out of that other cul-de-sac.
I mean, it is, but to what extent is that supporting access to the well? What portion of that has value to the town because it's supporting access to the well? I mean, it might be a little bit, it may not be as straightforward as mo- most of the cul-de-sacs.
I, I, yeah, I don't remember it being straightforward at all.
Yeah. That's DPW guy again.
But there's another drive into that well.
I'm not blaming him, I'm just saying that's why he was involved.
From where? Andrea, from where?
No, right up Midway.
There's another drive into that well that doesn't, this doesn't go over private property.
Where, where's the origin of that drive?
Off of the other street. Yeah.
I mean, they only have to demonstrate that they can fit the five lots in there, then they can have the short cul-de-sac with shorter frontage. But, I mean, but would it be a built loop road, or would it be, would it be what?
The board's not telling you, but they got a thing about, uh, cul-de-sacs.
No, 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 no. They just have to demonstrate that they can get five lots on.
You wouldn't imagine what we have to talk about in Southgate, changing the street lamp.
What, you're going back to the old space thing? Right, right. Just to demonstrate that you could do it. But I mean, this is kind of, I mean, no disrespect, man, but this is all local rules that's kind of lost on these guys. Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I see, I see what you're doing, so that's the way to approach it.
Yeah, that, we have a restriction on the length of cul-de-sacs, five hundred feet.
Okay.
But if you do it as an open space subdivision, you don't need that much frontage. I think you get away with, how much is it?
You can get down, you can get down to fifty, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, but it has to average, I forget what it is, a hundred or something like that.
I think it's a hundred and fifty and down to fifty and a hundred and fifty.
So, you, you could, you, you could put them in there on a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac, you could get them in there. But you just have to demonstrate in some way, like maybe with a loop road that goes around the entire thing, and show where your, where you get your five lots. You have to demonstrate that you could actually fit five lots on there, then come in with a, a, an open space subdivision with a s- a shorter cul-de-sac. Is, is that what this is? Right, but here's the problem with this plan. This is two thousand three, long before national heritage stuff and everything else. I would, uh, a good early start would be the two thousand, before two thousand eleven plan, and tell them to start from there, because that's. But, but the national heritage thing is not, is not part of the propos- the proposal for a conventional subdivision, that you could demonstrate that you could have five lots. But it is. But how that subdivision lays out, absolutely. Oh, how it lays out eventually, right. You don't want the guys, you know, going broke, you know, going down the wrong road. Right. Thank you. That's all. I'd still go see the original engineers, huh?
It is a complicated site.
Who, by the way, are not Kohler and Co. in Tonia. That was misinformation there. Gary or in Helman, who are out of, where is their office?
At least they were in two thousand one.
Those two offices, I think, frankly.
Oh, can you re- can you repeat that one more time?
You know what? Maybe we could just give a, can we give them just a picture of this, so they know what plan it is that's? Oh, is it on there? Yeah, it's on there. It's right there. Yeah, they've got it.
Can you see it?
If you can read that, so.
But you don't have it, you gave it to us on eighteen half eleven. You have a larger size, don't you?
No, we don't have it.
You probably got it from the realtor, right?
You don't have a larger size?
I didn't really look at that closely, but it could be an issue about frontage, 'cause they've got areas that they can't touch, and they're deriving frontage through them.
Oh, you could read it. But, you know, short of an actual even concept plan from the engineer.
Well, it's better than nothing, yeah.
Right. I mean, this was recent enough, if they've done all this work over these years, they'll know the plan, you know? Yeah. Well, thank you for coming in.
We appreciate you taking.
Very enlightening.
We really appreciate it.
Hope to hear from you soon.
And we're looking for, uh, to.
Sure if anybody would like a card, business.
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Whatever we can do to make it better.
I like your approach, yeah.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
Nice.
Appreciate it, thank you. So, I'm sure we'll definitely be in contact sooner than later, just so hopefully we don't lose the opportunity, I guess, so to say, so.
Thank you for looking at more of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I would suggest, um, bringing your building concepts, if you have it already, into the building department.
Okay.
So.
It was in the site plan?
Yeah, it was on page eight of the site plan.
I thought we looked through it.
I could have sworn we had the site plan.
I think we looked through it, didn't we?
Yeah, I think so, too.
That's what it looks like.
Right there.
We didn't see that. It was there last week, last time we discussed it.
It was on page eight.
Yeah, it was there, I looked at it.
Well, I remember seeing this piece of paper before, but, but I don't remember seeing it in the site plan, because, uh.
So, there was the sign, but we also received an email just today, I think, that he's saying he wants to be able to skip the management plan that we talked about. He's asking for release of that condition, and that was a condition I gave of the decision.
I mean, it's, it's not that complicated. It's, I don't understand why that would be a problem.
Yeah. I think particularly where we heard some, you know, about our concern about just making sure he's doing the best he can to put in a proper plan to mitigate traffic control and. Not traffic control, but.
So, Betsy, this is dated at least the printout to twelve, and our last meeting was the eleventh.
Yeah, yeah.
That's 'cause I asked Rick for it, but he did, um, he did tell me that it was on page eight of the site plan.
Well, I remember seeing it, I just don't remember. Oh, well. So, wh- where's the, um, the management plan?
He's asking for us to, to release him from that duty.
Uh, what, do you remember where it is in here?
Oh, I see, you're asking, hold on.
I mean, for a facility like this, I would think that's something.
They wanna do.
It's an unusual use.
I don't know why it would be an issue.
It's, um.
Because the guy who's.
Number seven?
I mean, I think it's a matter of explaining to him, almost like telling him, just write this, write, he's probably thinking there's more to it.
Yeah.
Because of, we've, we've given it a title that scares him.
Yeah, he doesn't need to hire an expert or anything. He can do this with a word process, you know?
Right, and I think that, and that's. Right, I think basically if he kind of tells his story in bullet points, he'd be able to, you know, to get past this. I, I, I think it's, he's making a bigger fear out of it than it actually is.
Yeah, I, 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 I think you're right.
And I, you know, if we talk to Rick, I, I, you know, I think that might, you know, soothe his concerns, that's all.
Tom, do you have some examples of management plans? I mean, I guess you probably have some here in the planning board.
Oh, I have seven.
Yeah, this, well, you're referring to a management plan for stormwater or?
No, 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 operational, right? Yeah, it's, it's to, for informing the trucks that they are not supposed to be using that.
And also generally what is ours are and what people do if they come after ours, was a lot of things talked about.
Yeah, yeah. Just a general management plan. Which he's already told us, he just has to put it down, yeah.
Right, right.
He has told us. I don't, I don't recall a building that we've had that for, um.
He's a good guy, I think he's just a little concerned with title, you know, things like that.
Shirey Developments.
I don't think so. Um, we had the directional restrictions coming out of the driveways, not to use Sharon Avenue, but, and the stormwater management plan, sweep the site and all that type of thing. But I think we've had a, you know, the, the truck center this way and.
Some of that talked about, and when, 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 like, for instance, some of the, the things we've reviewed, like when dumpsters can come or when oil pump deliveries can come for.
Well, they're, they're conditions of approval usually, you know, as opposed to.
No, we're just talking about like, uh, like who's gonna be there, who's gonna move the cars off, the trailers, who's, you know, like, it's just how the site's gonna be managed, because it's an unusual use. It's not a, a typical use that.
Probably contact information for the town, like.
Yeah. I, I don't recall that we've done such a plan.
Pretty simple. No, no.
How about Joffrey? Do you think Joffrey might have one?
I don't think so.
No?
No, I don't think he does.
We can get our hands on something to give him as an example, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, yeah. I think, sure, I don't think it's a case of him not wanting to do it. I think he just doesn't know what to do.
Probably right.
Right, that's all. Do you wanna be the contact for him, so that you can speak to him? If I could find, uh, you know, what the board's really looking for, for detail, if we can kind of, uh, sketch it out here for him and just say, here, put this in bullet form to us. Yeah, yeah.
No problem, I mean, with Tom and Gino, I'm sure we can come up with something.
Yeah, I think the guy's been a great applicant, he's been great to deal with.
I mean, I think you're right. The things that he said when he was in the audience, that would pride.
Exactly, but basically putting it in one place. Put it all down and write it.
Or the title's making a dig at it. Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So, the only issue was the sign. Is that right?
It was.
Oh, okay, so, uh, the other one, what's that?
So, the tagline is, "Will ship yours like it was ours."
Ah, good one. So, do we, uh, do we wanna, uh, sign this, uh, site plan application? Someone wanna make a motion? Oh, did we vote on the granting of the, um, special permits?
You didn't call it that.
Oh, okay.
So, Gino, can Gino fix the, uh, the redundant wording?
Yeah, it was, that was, it was a copying error, actually, what it was.
That's what it was, sure, I remember that, yeah.
I'm sure it was that.
'Cause when I went to look at my, I was starting.
I think that was the only thing I could have of it in this area.
Well, we have to, um, we have to vote on the waiver requests. I, I don't remember any opposition to granting any of these waivers that are, that are on here. Yeah, I di- I didn't see anything that we didn't, that we didn't, that nobody brought up anything.
What, um, what did we say that there was a collection from June that we had there?
Oh, yeah, it was just the hours of operation appeared at the bottom of the page and the top of the page.
Like I said, it was fine if my copy was supposed to have, when I printed it. So, I have one other note in my, in the decision from January sixth, I would have to, I'm trying to find it in this one, but, but from January sixth, it had to do with the eighteen-inch pipe between DMH six and nine, and I had a note check with Bob McGee for the material part, so I'm not.
I thought he was all right with that. Oh, wait, no, they, they were, the eighteen-inch, they're gonna replace with concrete anyway, 'cause it's a new pipe. It was a question, it was a second existing connection, and I think the issue was, would Bob let that remain? And I think the answer was, I, I thought he wrote a memo, saying it was all right.
Oh, it's the twelve-inch HDPE, right, the twelve-inch. Okay, okay.
And the whole subdivision's that way. It's concrete, pipes down the road, but the feeders are HDPE.
We were across the, the fourth main.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's, it's, it's an old note, I think you're right.
Kohler already had to put some, something around that.
I thought it was just that it was the HDPE pipe material in the street, and if we change it on this site, we had to do it on every site in the whole subdivision.
Yeah. Yes, it was. Yeah. You're right, yep.
So, I, I, I guess that we can, we can vote on the waiver requests as a group, right?
Right, because they're all granted.
Yeah, so does someone wanna make a, a, a motion to, uh, to, uh, grant the wa- waiver request for one through twelve? Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, um, site plan decision, uh, two thousand thirteen dash thirteen, WFM Enterprises LLC waiver requests, uh, numbered one through twelve be granted?
Second.
All those in favor?
No, I.
Aye. Do you want a site plan motion? Please do. Okay, and also make the motion to approve the site plan application decision number two thousand thirteen dash thirteen, WFM Enterprises LLC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, this, this has in it the requirement of the management plan.
Yep, Peter will work with him.
Yes, yes, we said we were gonna leave it thin, they're right.
I'm gonna give him a little draft as an outline.
Yeah, I think, well, we can wor- work through it once we got some feedback from you guys.
Yeah, we, we want the product, we're gonna support it.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, now, do we have anything else to talk about on the, uh, stormwater, uh, permit? Ooh, I don't think so. I think that the, uh, stormwater is, um, is, is all pre-built in the, in the subdivision, right?
Not much to talk about, actually.
All right, so.
About the special permit?
Oh, wait. Oh, there was a special permit. I knew there was another permit somewhere.
Yeah, so it was special.
Yeah, it's in the back here, right?
Yeah.
This condition to approve.
Oh, there it is. And this is for. For the auto storage use, and to allow parking in the front yard.
Is, uh, the sign, outdoor storage use.
Oh, I see, okay, as well as for a sign, yeah, okay, that's what it says.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's the sign and the outdoor storage use, A and B on page, uh.
And we don't have.
Q and F.
I just wanna make sure that this says outdoor. Do we? Should it be a motion for the use as well?
Well, it's an allowed use.
Yeah, it's already been determined by Bob.
Okay, then. Yeah. Oh, that's right, Bob, Bob made the determination, all right, so, uh, this special permit application decision number two thousand thirteen dash fourteen for WFM Enterprises. I, um, make a motion to approve the special permit for the outdoor storage for the vehicles as well as for the proposed sign.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just need to vote the, um, stormwater management permit.
I thought we always voted those separately, but.
Well, the, the, yeah, the question is, I don't see it referenced in the special permit that we just voted on, so.
No, it's hanging off the back, and it's always a separate application.
Separate permit.
Right.
But they don't have any stormwater on the site, it's all, it's all.
Well, they have, they have connecting lines.
Oh, it's a connecting line, oh, wow.
You gotta keep the site clean and stuff, so, it's fine.
Even though they have a condo association in stormwater.
Yeah, but this is, this probably authorizes them to clean their structures and sweep the property.
All right, I knew that was always a separate one.
Well, do we have one?
Yeah, it's in the back, it's the very last one.
Oh. Oh, this one back, oh, okay.
It's in between the decision and the second one.
Oh, conditions of approval, oh, for stormwater management permit, oh, okay, way back here. Yeah, everything's not applicable. Yeah.
Yeah, well, Gino's just using standard language, but in this case.
Yeah.
It's going into the system.
Has everyone read it? Yeah, you wanna make a motion on this one too?
Fine, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to approve the, um, stormwater management permit for WFM Enterprises, uh, doesn't have a decision of Nine Shire Drive.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, if you're gonna be doing business, can I leave now? I'm not accustomed to staying out this lit.
I guess, but the, um, we are gonna be looking at some zoning.
Rookie.
Yeah, I know.
It's really, you get out of, you get out of, out of the habit real quick.
Review two forty Dedham Street, site plan and special permit decisions?
No, no progress with respect to as-built information.
Okay. Okay.
That's where, I mean, that's where, um, Duncan's going, going on his other project too, right?
Oh, okay, so. Discuss town meeting warrant articles, here we are. Did you all get the little packet here?
Yes, but I haven't read it.
Okay, I'll start on the front, these came from Bob Bullock. I don't know who brought them to Bob Bullock, I'm as- I'm assuming that the, the, the Board of Selectment had some input into some of these. So, they, um.
What do we have here, Steve?
Oh, I know where this is.
There's several, there's several.
Yeah, but these professional offices with petitions, I talked to him on the day of our.
Yeah, yeah. This, this is, they.
Source, take that as a citizen petition.
Yeah, yeah.
So seven, seven are numbered, and then we have.
Yeah, those are, those are the citizen ones that we'll get to after we, we're just gonna just breeze over this one.
Yeah, I talked to Bob about a couple of these today directly.
And all he, all this is, is, um, it's saying that where professional offices are, that instead of having it as an, as of right, it, it's being made as a special permit.
And, you know, I think that's, here's where, can I give you some background from our conversation today?
Absolutely.
Because we, we were just talking about something else, and I asked him if he had any zoning, and he said, well, actually I do. And so where this came up, and here's his concern, but I think this is a broad brush, um, especially with what we're trying to do down there in the C areas, is, he was worried about methadone clinics coming in to, especially now that we have a huge medical office building. But, do we broad brush this and make a?
So, for example, that new medical office building would have to have a special permit?
Or anybody wanting to take down any of that other commercial space that's sitting down there that we're approving here, there, and everywhere. You've got Pondville Plaza, you've got, uh, you've got the, you know, um, even, let's say, um, Rocko Plaza, they're getting solicitations now finally, because Giacchetti's at the medical office building is already sold out. And there's people that, you know, are trying to, and if we could fill up that area, but if, if we're gonna turn that all into special permit, I, I think we're sending the wrong message. Does Bob have a better way to, you know, protect his concern on this?
This is the B two and B four district, not the C.
Yeah.
No, he said, he said it's allowed in B two, B four, but special permit in C two, C three, C five, right?
No, no, I see.
It's always, it would, it, that's existing, special permit in C two, C three, and C five.
Oh, it is, okay.
That, that's existing.
Wait a second.
Oh, he wants to change B two, B four to a, I see, to a special permit.
He wants to change just the B two to B four, as, as a special permit.
I see.
Okay, so, but he specifically mentioned down in the C district today.
I had asked, where is B two and B three and B four, I mean.
Aren't they just stranded parcels?
They, they are, I think they're little isolated parcels.
They are, B four is the airport.
Oh, let's.
Right, I thought they, I thought Ron Nation made a petition to change that to residential a long time ago.
I'm sorry, B two is the airport.
B two is the airport.
But I thought he petitioned to change that, it was.
There's one here. I don't know, that looks like it's probably B four, it's got that black line through it.
Right.
That's the, um.
The old, the old Colin Wade or whatever.
That, that's the power line.
Wireless communic- is it the wireless communication there?
No, no, that's, no, no, that's, that's the B four, that's where Colin Wade is.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wow, I keep forgetting about that section.
Yeah.
Well, is Colin Wade finally closed, have they gone?
B two and B four.
Or, or they're changing.
I think, I think that's. C, C two, three, five are already that way.
Where's B three?
Oh, oh, the, the rink, where the skating rink is.
Where the new affordable, I mean, sustainable homes are gonna go.
Oh, the, uh.
No, no, it's, it's more, it's more of a smaller area.
The skating rink is, is B three.
I think it's literally just the building, yes.
Just skating.
Very small, right?
Yeah, 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 it's right here.
So they're just almost single-use districts.
They are.
C three, which is the old, the old single.
Okay, that makes sense.
Oops.
Well, I guess if it's not the C area, then I feel a little bit better about it.
So it's, it's only the B two to the B fours is where it's being changed.
Okay. All right.
But.
And because they're single, because they're small lots, it's worth a special review, cause they're surrounded by residential.
Residential.
No, 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 I, I understand that, I was just, he was, he brought up that whole methadone issue.
Yeah, and, and the language here is just language specifically for the B two district, the B three district, and the B four district. That's, that's what this second page is.
Article one, B two to B four.
Medical clinics?
Yeah, I know, I've already lost interest in the other one.
All right, so, anyone have any issue with it? I mean, we can go over these in more detail at, at a future time, it would just, uh.
What time is it?
It's ten o'clock, so, the, um, the, the, this is what we were discussing when Gino was here a couple of weeks ago.
What article?
And, and, where, this is on article, his article seven, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the, uh, section D two C residential uses. And it has to do with ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system.
Oh, that's his last week's, so, last meeting.
Oh, he put something in?
He put something in there, he put a special permit right across the board. Now, I imagine we're not the only people that had comments about the, the neighborhood issue. So, so, I, I'm sure that it was brought to Bob's attention and, and even, you know, so, that he spoke to town council, and they decided to go forward with it because they didn't think that. Uh, I, I know that we were advised that it was too restrictive, because what.
Well, the solar access provisions in the zoning act, I mean, but if town councils looked at it, I guess it's, uh.
Well, the language in the solar access law is basically, you know, they leave the innocuous reasonable.
Yeah.
That word reasonable, um, regulation, but until it's.
There, there could be a problem just cause you're making it a special permit process, which is burdensome, but I guess the town councils rule it, oh, the AG's gonna rule.
Well, I'm hearing secondhand that the town council has looked at it, so, that this is, this is what, that they've come up with for trying to find some sort of a solution.
I mean, at least it provides a forum to ensure that someone is not installing that type of equipment and is going to do it in such a way that it impacts, and a butter, more than it impacts them.
Right, I understand that, that's a reason for the, the permit, but you know what, some of them, he challenged the idea of it's not subject to a forum, and it may not even make it way out of municipal law unit, once this thing is passed or not passed, or, well, if it's not passed, it's not going to municipal law. But when it is passed, you know, they can pitch it and say, you can't do that, we have a general law that says solar access.
We'll find out if it's accepted by the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, we're not suggesting, yeah, I mean, it's gonna take care of itself.
Right. He have no choice.
Yeah, right, I mean, the Attorney General may just say, no, you can't do that.
Right.
Even if we pass it at a town meeting, so.
So if it passes muster with town council, I would support it, at the bottom.
Yeah. Okay, so now we're on the citizen, uh, petition ones, and.
Please skip two through six.
The, um. And, and Peter, you may want to, um, recuse for just a little while here, because I think it may involve some of your parcels.
Okay.
So this is where a private citizen can, can put forward a.
What's that?
Not may, it does, yeah.
It does involve some of your.
So a private citizen can, can put something out to the private.
Absolutely, yes.
Closing the, uh, door after the house is up.
That's what these all are.
Yeah.
How many of them are there?
So, what, what they want to do, the first one here that we're looking at, and they all say page one, so, um, it, uh, but, it, it, it is to remove the ability for the planning board to allow a density of, um, not less than four units per lot in the town center for residential use. They wanna get rid of the I seven A one altogether.
Where does that leave, without this, what's the, what's the baseline density then?
This increases the density, and let me see what they, if I can get it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So if I'm understanding this right, the, all the work in fact to May two thousand ten to create a dense housing district in, uh, in one fell swoop is being removed, sorry.
That is correct, that, that is what they want to do, is to remove that. So, uh, and, and this is actually, it, it, it's just the whole section that allows that density, uh, in the B one. And, and it was in the warrant, I mean, it was in the zoning bylaws as of November two thousand twelve.
Uh, but I believe this section was passed in May of two thousand ten.
It may have been passed back then, yeah. But it removes the ability to, to have that density.
Because subsequent to that, last year in two thousand twelve, we also added the additional district, I think it's the Kelly property.
Down at, in the C one district, right?
And we added it as part of the off-highway C one district.
Right.
So it doesn't define any density then?
Well, it, it, it's the, I forget what the density.
You can only have certain, it has to be above the second floor of a building, above, uh, retail.
Yeah. Right.
As residential units as part of a commercial site plan, so it, it removes the ability to have a purely residential.
Right.
Development in B one.
Yeah, yeah.
Outside the business core.
Anywhere.
No, he's saying in B one outside the business core, but that's specific.
Well, that's what the I seven A one is, is B one outside the business core.
Yeah, what's being.
Yeah, so, okay, so it re- would therefore require mixed use and eliminates the exception to the mixed use.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to the next one. And. Let's see, let, um, let me see if I remember, see, see, was the only thing added on this one by the, oh, by the Zoning Board of Appeals, Walter?
No, it was the, or, entire PMLD.
Or the entire.
Or entire, oh, that's right. You can't have, you can't exceed sixteen bedrooms for any single lot or entire PMLD.
If this passes.
So, if you, if, if you divide up a parcel into several lots with a, a PMLD, the entire, the entirety of it can only have sixteen bedrooms.
Yeah, that's, that's what this reads.
That's what this reads as it's, as it's written now.
Unless you got a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals, still allowing you to do it if you got a special permit.
Mister Chairman, can I comment on this?
Yes.
Um, you know, the existing, uh, bylaw, uh, doesn't have that, uh, statement or entire PMLD in it.
Right.
That is correct.
And I think the original, uh, I, I think the original zoning bylaw study committee considered just adding or correcting some language because they felt they left that zoning board of appeals part out, but sliding the, uh, PMLD statement in is clearly an agenda-driven.
The, 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 when you get, when we get towards the back, we'll have the zoning articles that the zoning bylaw study committee was looking at, and that's where the zoning bylaw study committee was putting in by the zoning board of appeals. So it's got the same language there.
I remember seeing, I just could make a meeting last night, that's all.
And.
It's, it's the PMLD.
But the whole, the issue is the or entire PMLD, that's the new language.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the issue in this.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Except by special permit of the zoning board of appeals, and the PMLD is approved by the planning board.
In the ve- very nature of the planning multi-lot development.
And, uh, I'm just trying to understand what it says.
Right.
It's a little contradictory.
Well.
Yeah, and I, it, it's, it's.
It kinda nails it, it kinda nails it, though, although, anything that's already got an application before is for, this isn't gonna change.
Or, can I clarify something?
But I think what Andrea is saying, though, is PMLDs are gonna come before our.
That is correct.
And it's granting the special permit to not even the board who's reviewing the development, so it's, it's a little bit con- conflicting in terms of, you know, the, the very board that's gonna grant the special permit isn't even the board that's approving.
It's not much different than what exists today, right? Uh, we, we, if someone wishes to, to quote violate the density requirements, they have to go before the, the ZBA.
But if a, a PMLD is a, is a, is.
It's a different P.
It's, yeah, it's a different animal than just regular zoning, I mean, the planning board put a lot of time into, into. I mean, the planning board put a lot of time into, into that type of review.
Well, remember, this is not something that came out of town hall.
Oh, no, no, no.
Something by.
No, I, no, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm, that's why I kind of cut Peter off, is it's not about the policy, it's just trying to figure out, it's just trying to figure out the mechanics of it. If, if a P M L D is getting approved by the planning board, the zoning, the zoning board could shut it right down?
They could, they could restrict the, um.
The density.
Number of bedrooms.
The density, yeah.
They could say, no, we're not going to grant you the approval for.
Well, Steve, can I, can I shed some light on this? Because I'm kind of studied on it right now. A P M L D is a special permit.
Right.
As is a special permit for additional bedrooms.
Right.
Separate on their own.
And two separate boards.
On two separate boards. Because the S P G A, the special permit granting authority for a P M L D is, by its very nature, a planning activity vested with your board.
Yeah.
This bedroom issue has historically, going back to when assisted living facilities were going crazy in the nineties on the books back then. It's been sitting there ever. I don't think it ever even anticipated our dense housing bylaw, but that's not what's in front of us today. I think as a planning board, you should take offense to the fact that they're taking planning activities away from the planning board as a special permit granting authority.
Well, I suspect that the submission of this is thinking they're going to stop what's already been planned.
And I do have a question on that because I read under Mass General Law's, um, chapter eighty-one, section Q, that says that anything submitted prior to the first advertising of the planning board hearing for zoning changes is grandfathered in. And I believe that is how we handle things.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that's Mass General Law, that isn't even a local reg.
No, no, but, I mean, as far as the P M L D, that was just something that was recently discussed with the board, okay? So, you as our chairman, I mean, I'd look for some direction from you and not, not tonight necessarily, Steve, but, you know, we discussed that in terms of what's approved.
Well, it also seems like, I, I understand what they're, I understand what they're trying to do and I understand the reason they want to do it, but, um, you know, to, to put one board against the other? I mean, that's forum shopping. If you, you know, why, I mean, I, the simple question to me, that for me is, why not just have it be the same board? Why does it have to be a special permit, why does it have to be a separate board? Why can't it be the same board that's making the decision on the P M L D?
The, the issue, this I four A eleven already has the zoning board of appeals as the, uh, decision authority. See, they have the, they're the permit granting authority, they were added in just to clarify it a little bit. See, at the very end, it says, except by special permit by the zoning board of appeals. The, the line by the zoning board of appeals was just added in just to make sure that the.
Oh.
That it was clear for both of those things.
Okay.
And not just the bottom one.
Okay, so, okay.
That's why that that one was, was planned on being put in by the zoning, the bylaw study committee.
Okay.
Was putting that first one in by the zoning board of appeals, just to make everything perfectly clear in here. Uh, but, but then now that or entire P M L D, so that entire P M L D, that's what involved the planning board. But this will all come up again. The next one. And article one, article two, article three on this page would be reverting certain parcels in the B one district outside the business core to be reverted back to residential R one zones. And it turns out.
Take them out of the, take them out of B one.
Take them out of the business, uh, uh.
Redefine them.
Out of the B one district, right.
Redefine them.
Redefine them as the, uh, R one.
Or R two.
Or R two, that's correct.
What a major step backwards for our master planning for our town.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Excuse me, I see the petition, his name is Diamond, and I don't see the Diamond lot taking them and putting it back in the residential district. Was that an oversight by the petitioner?
I'm not sure about that. We're just looking at what's before us.
No answer needed, thank you.
Things like that could be brought up at a town meeting because they had their, their numbers of signatures. So they had the ten signatures, so it will definitely be on the warrant. I don't know what the recommendation of the advisory board is going to be.
I think I, I think I recognize the parcels in article two and three. Uh, the parcel in article one is, that wouldn't happen to be the Kelly property, would it?
It is Paul Kelly's property.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the other two are one oh six and one oh eight mains.
Yeah, I, I recognize those two.
And yet the property adjacent to it, the old town hall, would stay in the B one.
Yes.
As would with the proponent's family property too.
So those are the, those are the ones that you haven't heard of before. The ones that are coming from the zoning bylaw study committee is to bring back the, the marijuana overlay district. Because the, um.
Moratorium.
Yeah, the moratorium is going to expire.
Right.
On the thirtieth of next month or something, or.
I, I thought it was, uh, at, at the end of June.
Well, whatever the date is, it's going to expire.
Soon.
So we have to get something in place. So we have the, the whole thing written for the, um, the overlay district.
Which we've already looked at, right?
It was on, it was on town meeting last time, but we, oh, yeah, 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 please.
Didn't really look at it though.
Um, it, it was discussed, but we, um, had, uh, they had put in the, the moratorium vote ahead of this.
The, the both articles were on the warrant last time around. This one and the moratorium. And, uh, this one was I P'd after the, the moratorium was, was passed.
They thought it was going to be confusing, but now we have to bring this back in because now the moratorium is going to run out.
Mm-hmm. Right. As opposed to just taking them both up then and pass them.
Should have taken them both up then, right.
Move point.
That was our recommendation, but it didn't happen.
Well, I think we felt that they were going to be, uh, you know, inconsistent with one another to do a moratorium and do that. I think that's what happened, we had to pick one or the other.
And I thought that the state regs weren't in place at the time.
They weren't.
Yeah, that's the reg, we thought.
And we do reference these state regs in here.
Move point, we just resubmitted it, I mean, we know where it's going, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Down to Sin City.
Okay, so, so that's article XX and YY. YY is just the, uh, the purpose for the, the marijuana treatment centers.
Yeah, right.
And XY is, um, just adding in by the zoning board of appeals into that same place that we were on on the other one. So this is where by the zoning board of appeals.
That's how they came together.
Going into I four A eleven.
Actually, there's other changes in there, Steve.
No, there aren't.
No, there aren't.
No, that's the only thing.
There really aren't.
I'm looking at our zoning bylaws and I'm looking at this and they're different.
Well, the, what, what you're looking at in the printed document is not updated with the ones from the last.
Right, these are from two thousand and twelve.
Right, from the last town meeting. We're, we're at least one town meeting behind in the published, uh.
It's available online.
Yeah, right.
I haven't made any books.
Right.
Okay.
And of course, this article was the one that, that had been proposed to change the number from sixteen to thirty-two and it got defeated.
Right, but what I see here that's not in the, in this book, which I understand this is out of date, is that parenthetical information, so the lot size at thirty thousand square feet or.
We added that at the last town meeting.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's the only difference.
Okay.
That had been.
I thought that was your idea, to put that in there. That was your idea to put that in?
No, it was Andrew's.
Was it Andrew's?
Yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was Michelle's.
And then I thought, I thought the recent discussions got us into two different, um, two different ways of measuring density.
Two different measure, two different descriptions of lot sizes, I remember.
If you remember, I mean, we were talking about lots and then acres and.
Yeah, yeah. We had to narrow it down somehow.
We were comparing it with different towns, Medfield and everywhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I underst, but the question is, is this going to be inconsistent with other ways density is defined?
That's not being changed. The only thing that's being changed is adding that, that extra by the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
After the lot size of thirty thousand square feet.
Just clarifying who gives the special permit.
Accepted by special permit by the zoning board of appeals.
Uh, I, my question wasn't, I appreciate you trying to get us out because I was supposed to be out at ten.
Yeah.
But is, did, did we, by putting this in last time, did we create two different units of measure for density? And did we, did we create a confusion? Trying to, trying to clarify in this situation, did we create a confusion elsewhere?
At some point, if, if you can look and see if it creates confusion, you can bring it forward at the.
It was with that other.
I thought that this clarified it pretty well.
I thought it helped, actually.
I thought this helped.
That was the intent, and this was for the B one, the core, not for.
Because we didn't want a lot being, you know, a five thousand square foot.
Right.
Lot, and so we wanted to give it some unit of measure, and so, um. I think it was helpful.
Yeah, I, I think what I'll do is look online just to compare.
Yeah.
You know, to, to do the diligence.
And, and there's also the, um, the, the article A A here, the one that's submitted by the planning board, there is one extra thing that was recommended by. This one here, it was given to us separately. This was, um.
The landscaping thing.
And there is, um, something that was added on after where it says contractors headquarters and it says. And in full compliance with section F ten and F.
Right.
F ten has some pretty good controls in it, if you, if you read what F ten says. But it also says, and provided that there is no outside storage of materials. Because that's the one thing that we did not want in the B one district, right? Because we were afraid that they would start bringing in loam and.
Which they have done.
Yeah.
Which they have done.
But after we had already discussed this, Bob Bullock came and told us that we were somewhat deceived a little bit when the, the person came before us, um, to ask about potentially changing this so that he, they could be allowed to have the, the, um, their contract headquarters out of that building is that Bob is telling us now that there's not just one business in that building. That guy's got about three businesses in there.
I've changed my mind on this article, I, I no longer support it. I, I've considered, and I think that we really ought not to allow this type of business in the B one district.
I guess I'm back online because we're not talking about B one district as opposition.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's something to consider, and we'll probably have to talk about that one again.
Which one do you want?
The A A, the one that was, um.
Separate, it's, it's an individual sheet of paper.
It's the one that's a separate sheet.
It's actually in our packet too, though, on the last page.
Steve, before you go too far on the article X Y.
Yes.
That I four A eleven.
Right.
My, my concern here is, uh, you're, you're talking about not exceeding sixteen bedrooms for any single lot. But it's sixteen bedrooms per acre for a single lot. So you're really limiting it.
But that's what exists, that, that language exists.
Or greater, thirty thousand square feet.
Or greater.
Or greater.
Or greater.
It's the smallest you can use is thirty thousand square feet.
Right, that's what we were saying.
The only language changing here.
I'm, I'm, I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah, yeah, we had had the same conversation back when we first put it in here.
Well, well, I mean, I just, I brought up a concept with you folks a few weeks ago, and we had three maybe larger than thirty thousand square foot lots.
Yeah.
But there were sixteen bedrooms on each above commercial.
Mm-hmm.
I just didn't want to see this change. It's very.
Right, fair enough.
This regularly ends convoluted.
But the only language changing in this, in this proposal are adding the words by the zoning board of appeals.
If we want to look at this again at a future date, we can, but the only one that we're doing now is just adding that language of by the zoning board of appeals, just to make sure it's clear.
But isn't normally the change, oh, the, the zoning board of appeals up top, but what about down below, the second time?
That was already in the language.
That was already there.
Yeah, it's already there. So it was in the second sentence, but not in the first one, so it's just to clarify consensus.
It wasn't clear who, who was, was, uh, given the special permit.
It implied that the, the, the right, uh, board, but it didn't actually state.
At any rate, back to article A A.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I speak for myself, you, obviously I don't speak for the board, but I've reconsidered and I do not believe that we should allow that type of business in the B one district.
We'll, we'll put it.
It's more appropriate.
For discussion for, do you want to discuss it at the next meeting? Do you want to have it on the agenda to discuss at the next meeting?
Why can't we discuss it now?
The warrant's closed.
Well, we can withdraw.
IP it.
Okay.
Well, yeah, withdraw it or IP it. The warrant hasn't been printed, so we can.
Yeah, it's not printed, so we, we still want to add this extra little line that says, provided there is no outside storage of materials. So that will definitely be added in, that last line, that provided no outside storage. But the, you know, like, you know, we can at a later date, if we say, no, we don't, we don't support this any longer than. But do you really want to discuss it tonight, or do you want to chew on it and discuss it at the next meeting?
There's not much to it.
There isn't much to it.
It's, I think, it's, it's in a business, it's more appropriate in the C one district or, or one or the other districts, not in the B one district, in my opinion.
It would take a special permit to get it though?
It would, by the zoning board of appeals.
Amongst other things, you know, this is also the reason why we ended up losing more power to rent them was the lack of the ability to expand into, you know, increased businesses that they chose to want to do. And they, I mean, they, they just sold the building to this guy, he was a taxpayer for many years here, and he picked up and left.
Glenn, they're talking about, yeah.
So, I mean.
I mean, I, I'm starting to lean in Walter's direction here, but, um, but I think I need to think about it. I mean, I, I said some things as far as Dunkin' Donuts, where there were some aspects that if it was a new project, we might not support it, but we're supporting it because it's going to be an improvement over what's existing.
Right.
This is a use now that is not currently encompassed within our zoning. That's different in terms of, all right, it's there and let's try to work with it. You know, sometimes perhaps that thinking makes more sense than other times, you know, where this is a different use. So I, I need to kind of reflect on this a little bit. I mean, I certainly don't want to turn away any business, businesses from the town. But I, I share some of Walter's concerns here.
Is accessory building defined?
I'm sorry?
Accessory building, is that defined?
If it's in caps, it is.
That to me would be kind of a critical part of it because, I mean, what can be done in an accessory building?
Look in F, look in, um, section F ten. If you look in section F ten, there's a lot of restrictions in there.
When we were discussing this at last evening at the meeting, um, Bob Bullock, uh, and we said it really ought to be like in C one, Bob said, there really isn't much space down there to, to accommodate this. There's not, there's not empty spots where a guy could move in, which is unfortunate.
In the C one district.
The C one district. So if, you know, if you say, hey, we can't support you.
Maybe not pre-existing structures, but there's, is that, you've got Shire, I mean.
Yeah, but they're, they're not readily available, so this guy could, whatever's available is filled up, is what Bob was saying.
No, no, that's what I mean, right, there's sites there, but they're un.
Right, so if you said.
Unoccupied.
If you said to the fellow, hey, you can't do that anymore, but you can go down the street, there isn't any room down the street for him to go.
Right.
That's the unfortunate part.
You'd have to build on a lot.
No, we'd have to get, there's buildings down there that aren't quite complete, that could be completed and leased out a part of it anyway to him.
And there are plans for other buildings that have not yet been constructed.
Right, but all of that takes time and he's probably got a building here that he wants to run the business out of the spring and blah, 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 blah. So that would be a tough, tough nut to crack, you know?
Well, not only that, but jumping from a wind, snow plowing, landscaping operation to owning your own property is a pretty big.
Or even renting from somebody who would finish a building, you know?
Right.
Well, what are the businesses now, so I'm hearing there's three businesses?
I don't know, I heard this from the. I don't know. I heard this for the first time last night.
All right, well, let's.
That there are multiple businesses down there.
If you find out, could you share that?
Yes, I will.
But even if there's only one business, and it's a landscaping business.
That's, that's what we were told, that there's one business, my business.
Maybe the other ones are even more.
And I don't do that.
Yeah, they ought to belong to marijuana district.
I would be concerned that the language is inherently contradictory because it says contractors headquarters. But limited to accessory buildings located on the same lot, et cetera, and that. Kind of echoes the definition of accessory buildings, so how could you, what would be the principal use? To which a contractor's headquarters is accessory? I don't see how that could possibly be. What would be the use? I mean, you know, if the use was storage of equipment, that could be access, accessory to a contractor's headquarters. What this says is the contractor's headquarters. But limited to accessory buildings, and accessory building is defined as a building that's incidental to the primary use. What's the primary use?
Primary use is the, is the building out front. The accessory building is this garage in the back.
Well, what is the use of the building out front? I don't know.
It's commercial.
Real Estate Act, uh, in a bank, or.
Credit union, yeah.
So a contractor's headquarters is not accessory to any of those uses?
He, but he can be geographically located in the accessory building. The use can be geographically located.
Now, if that, if the language isn't clear, that was certainly the intent.
Accessory building.
I think Bob's just trying to find a way to keep the guy alive.
Contractors headquarters.
That's, that's.
Yes, that's. Yes, but I.
Accessory building is defined as the use of a building customarily incidental to. And located on the same lot with the principal building.
Oh.
So that, that can't be, there could never, there could never be a principal building to which. A contractor's headquarters would be an accessory use. Makes no sense.
Oh, I wish Gino was here.
That's, that's right.
Drafted it, so, you know, it, uh, let's see.
That's worth, that's, but that's worth, worth noodling.
Who did I tell you? I mean, Gino being here at the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I'm sure that we can update these before they're, they go before the.
Yeah, I can take that position because Gino isn't here to explain why it's possible.
Yeah.
But if, but if you can take that position, then it has to be written more clearly.
Right, I agree.
Right.
Well, I think it's, the, this was written without careful examination of the definition of an accessory building, so.
Yeah.
Steve, can I pick up something since we talked about Gino, and I know they. Here's a number now. But, um, obviously they were interviewing planners tonight, I don't know if they finally, they took a vote or not, but. What's going to happen with Gino?
We extended his contract through the end of June, didn't we?
Right, but still, I mean, it's around the corner. I guess, you know, in the big picture, I'm asking.
I, I had always thought that that was part of the intention of hiring a town planner, was that they would support boards like ours. Maybe I'm wrong about that.
Well, we'll have to see how everything shakes out with the person, I mean, we have several months to, to, to go over it. Depending on who they hire and what the guidelines are for that person, whether it's a full-time position or a part-time position, they don't even know that yet.
But I think the two guys that were left in the interviews tonight, one of them was actually sitting back here earlier, and they. I thought they were the full-time people, and the part-time person was the one from Rentham that, did she drop out or?
She withdrew, she withdrew.
Okay, so they interviewed the two guys who, you know, from what I could see from the interview, were looking for full-time jobs.
That's true.
I, you know, I, I think there's still questions in terms of how it should be organized and. What the relationship with the planner and the zoning enforcement in terms of that role and responsibility, and until some of that stuff is sorted out. The amount of time that that individual has in terms of supporting some of the, the needs of this board. I have not certainly had those conversations in terms of whether, you know, we're going to be adequately supported. By that resource without a resource like Gino, and I think, you know, this board should be comfortable that we will. And I'm not suggesting that that can't happen or won't happen.
Right, I mean, you might not, but it's, I mean, have you been contacted by the town administrator?
No, no.
Okay.
Uh, but Walter has gone through, and he, he's reviewed all of the qualifications of the people. He's one of the people that recommended.
Tom, Tom and Jeff, you want there also?
Tom.
Steve, I'm going to start checking your blood sugar here, because I'm kind of worried.
No, oh, that's right, but I had forgotten that you were there because I spoke to Walter about it last night, so. The, so you guys both are fully aware of the, the qualifications of the people that were brought in?
Two very strong candidates.
Oh, the last two guys were awesome. They were both great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two different styles, so I could tell.
Yeah, very different, but. And I think, I think, I think from what I've heard from Jack. The idea is that that individual will end up supporting this board, and probably not. The belief is they will probably not require us to, to continue with Gino down the road.
We'll see how it all shakes out. We've got a little bit of time, we've got until the end of June. To see what, what's going on with this.
Right.
So. Any other questions on these?
So we'll chew on this and chew on this and come back to it next time.
We're going to chew on it because, you know, like, I, I think now that we've brought it up and, and all this new information.
That's fine.
We're going to be discussing, oh, oh, when's the deadline? Because the board of selectmen are going to be discussing it next week.
Email me one.
So you would like.
One of us doesn't have one.
I will have the change that we made.
Yes.
About putting the.
Someone doesn't.
Provided that there's no outside storage of materials added in, and get Gino to clarify this.
Thank you.
Brought up.
Did you have this?
And you sent it to us via email.
And he could do it by email.
Sure.
And so we'll get that in. The board of selectmen is going to be discussing them next week, but at any point, we can always recommend IPing it. If we decide that we don't, we don't really agree.
Well, we don't fully understand from some.
Yep, right, yeah.
Oh, gosh, more of those things, huh?
This is just the two decisions that we approved.
Do you have this, do we have this to talk about?
Didn't, didn't we already talk about that?
Oh, I don't know, we finished that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was half listening to you and half.
I am definitely out of here.
Okay, thanks, get off.
See you, Andrea.
Yes, good seeing you again.
Good night, Andrea.
Good night, Andrea.
Forward to working with you again.
For how long?
Long time. All relative, right?
It's all relative.
Do you want to go by topic by topic? Or do you want to just go generally?
If I could just say, well, this is a generic traffic study.
Right.
Conforming to E O E A guidelines, ninety-five percent of the traffic studies you'll ever see will have these components. The real question is, how big is the traffic study area? I made it the two intersections nearest to the site, and that's it. In my judgment, the traffic volume generated doesn't warrant extending it beyond that.
I, I agree with that.
I agree with that, too. Four places for signature.
I think the only thing Michelle thought that it should be clarified where I used. Ambiguous language maximum development of the site, we should say, for forty-two total residential dwellings.
In which section?
Under proposed project.
Oh, oh, full buildout, oh, okay, yeah.
I said full buildout, but it's probably better to actually, in case it changes or whatever. So forty-two units.
Because technically you could build out a whole lot more than forty-two on that site.
Yes, under, yes, under zoning, yeah. Yeah, we don't want to do.
That'd be interesting.
What's, what section was that, Michelle, you would?
It's just on the first page, the second section called Proposed Project. It currently says.
Oh, yeah, 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 I got it, thank you, yep.
Okay, the queuing analysis, I, I, I agree with the seven AM. Main Street, Union Street, Rockwood Road intersection.
So that covers.
What about the other, you have two intersections here.
The first one covers both roundabouts.
No, it's only the nearest roundabout.
Street, you didn't mention the Secoast Street in the queuing analysis, right?
Yeah, he does.
Yeah.
The traffic study area.
Traffic study area.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm in, in the queuing analysis, I'm on the next page.
Oh, no, I don't think, well, I don't think queuing was an issue at Secoast Street, at least nobody's ever mentioned it.
All right.
It has been mentioned at the Rotary, so.
All right.
Well, if you're trying to come down Secoast Street to get onto Main Street. Isn't that a queue when you're trying to get into the main flow of traffic?
Or cross Main Street, I have to cross Main Street there, yeah.
Cross Main Street, yeah.
Is that considered queuing, if you're waiting a long time?
Well, queuing is the number of vehicles that are lined up.
That's more of a wait time.
Stop sign or whatever.
It, it doesn't necessarily.
Which way does the queue form, Walter, here?
It forms typically on, on, on Secoast Street, along the frontage of the cemetery there, or on the other side.
Secoast, heading towards Medfield.
Or on the other side, uh, uh, Needham Street coming into.
On Needham Street, right.
Coming in the main street.
I, I, I've never, I've never seen that intersection in the morning or afternoon, so I don't know.
Be a bit of a wait.
Well, Steve, Steve runs it, so.
It is, that, that, that's.
I don't find it to queue a lot of cars, but you can wait a long time.
Cars that usually do.
Wait a long time to get out.
Well, I think especially when the train comes, and then all of a sudden you get a whole slew of cars coming in, so you're waiting for a while, you know, that, that does happen.
Right.
Normally you would calculate a queue based upon the nature of the traffic control and the number of vehicles. I threw it in as something to directly observe because anecdotally, a whole bunch of people in the audience kept. Reporting these rolling queues extending for substantial distances. I, I don't know whether that happens, I don't normally go there in the morning, but. I thought it was mentioned broadly enough that we should probably quantify it.
Yeah, so, so I, I think by your definition, the queuing that, that we're talking about does not really apply to the. The Secoast Street, Main Street, Needham Street intersection because there are, there's not a big queue there, so there's usually two or three cars.
Right, but it's a wait time, and I think when they were talking about, you know, the challenges they have from their driveways, it's a similar issue, though, to the Needham Street Secoast.
Yeah.
Because they can sit there in their driveway for a very long time while this stream of cars, which are moving, nothing's queuing up. But nobody's, you know, letting them out of their driveway.
Any unsignalized intersection, whether it's a driveway or whether it's a big commercial driveway with stop signs or not, the, the theory is. The Main Street traffic is unimpeded, and the folks who get delayed are the people. Waiting for either a single gap if they're turning right.
Right.
Or dual gaps if they're, you know, so the, the more vehicles going by, the longer you got to wait for a gap that's big enough to turn out.
Does the study address issues like that, the non-signalized?
Yes, we're asking them to do level service at the three intersections, so you get a roundabout and two, uh, two T-type intersections.
So that's under the impact section on the back page, oh.
That would be under, um. Operations analysis on page three. Evaluate the intersection operations using the Highway Capacity Manual for those three intersections. Two at either side and the site driveway itself.
So, Tom, I mean, it will be obvious to the, to the folks who do the analysis, but, you know, the public safety. Building there in particular, you know, with the fire department there and such, how does that enter into the picture? Is it something that, you know, when you talk about the site here, should you mention, you know, proximity to. Public safety building for the town?
Um, I don't think it's close enough that it would affect the site driveway or the roundabout. I mean, that's, that's a separate deal, whether, whether a vehicle goes in and out of that building or not. I mean, that's down beyond the Dunkin' Donuts, it's further down the street, so it's, it's not close enough to either of these locations. It's going to affect it.
Well, the public safety building is between the Dunkin' Donuts and the site.
Yeah.
Right, or at least, right, we say the same thing?
I think so.
On the opposite side.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that building being there affects the operation of either intersection. It was like right across the street, and it was like, it turned it into a four-way intersection, one leg of which was. A driveway of the public safety building that would affect it, but as long as it's two hundred feet away from either intersection, it shouldn't really affect it.
So in terms of impacts, you know, when trucks come out to light a fire or something like that, I mean, does that enter into the analysis when they do this? Not unless there's a fire when they're there and there's a problem, right, that all of a sudden.
I mean, on, on a given day, if emergency vehicles were to come out. It would disrupt the normal flow of traffic, whether it's a signalized intersection that gets preempted. Or an unsignalized intersection, you yield to the emergency vehicles, but, you know, I've never seen that analyzed. In terms of trying to figure out how that affects traffic operate, because it's theoretically a, um. A stochastic event happening.
You better spell that for me. Don't use the word unless you can spell it.
Characterized by random and unpredictable variation, but I don't know how you spell it. Something like that. That's why God invented spell checkers.
Most of these we've discussed, actually, modes, mode split.
Yeah, that, that's not, I guess a lot of stuff, that's not conventional, I don't think of it, but, yeah, um. You will get a mode split at the site, I mean, somebody's going to walk or bike or something to the train. It's kind of hard to quantify, I mean. The result of quantifying it wouldn't have enough of an effect on operations, so it's probably worth trying to quantify it.
Right.
But you, if I were doing the study, I'd make the statement that, you know, the analysis is a worst-case condition. Because some of the car trips will be diverted to walking or other modes. We know that'll happen, I don't know how you're going to quantify it. Unless you interview people or something.
Um, under the heading site distance, we haven't included there the site distance analysis for the. Main Street, Secoast Street.
Yeah, I, I don't know that you normally, you normally wouldn't do that. I mean, the, the only impact is that you're adding additional vehicles to, um. Like a through movement. You, you do site distance at the site driveway. Because it doesn't now exist, and you wouldn't want to locate a major driveway where there was a significant site distance problem. But, you know, what we're adding, if, if there is a site distance, interse, site distance issue at either of the other intersections. We're adding two percent maybe to the traffic volume that's there, so if there's a problem, it's a problem that should be dealt with separately. Other than it's part of the study, so I don't think it's.
I don't know, I, I mean, I still think it should be added. Walter, you, you travel from Secoast in that direction, correct? Onto Main.
I do, I mean, but his point is that if there's a problem, it exists today, and there is a problem, if you come down Secoast Street. By the cemetery and stop at the Main Street intersection, the street bows back just slightly, plus there's a big bush right on the corner. And you have to inch out there in order to, to see who's coming down.
I don't know how you can just include it for the turning, but not include it in the site distance, that doesn't seem how you could.
Because the site distance is, is relative to the new driveway that's being, or the new road, whatever it is that's being created. It's not to evaluate an existing condition that falls outside of the site of this development.
Problems are. Well, we know that, we know the site problems, and the site problems are all on private property. That's, all those site problems are private property.
By a back door because we, we've asked for crash data, and they'll look at crash data at those two intersections. So if it is. So if it is higher than the district or state average, the traffic engineer will look at that to see how, uh, that could be mitigated. So we, we back, if, if there are a lot of accidents there and they're being caused by site distance, we, we find that out through the crash rate data. But, I mean, if you wanna look at it there, for the traffic engineer to do it, it's probably five minutes work. I mean, all.
I think it should be done.
I disagree. I think it's taxing a project that gets outside of its site area. I think if we start taxing developers with problems that exist in our town, you know, outbound of, I think crash data absolutely could be impacted by the amount of traffic that, that could be generated. I don't see how an existing site condition that we already know is problematic should become something that we would.
And, and I agree with you because it, it, it's, it's one thing if it's something that, that the developer could correct.
It's, yeah.
But as it exists, it's problems on private property. It's the building that comes right out to the roadway. You're gonna get beyond the building that's like sitting on the sidewalk.
With shrubbery and stuff like.
But, yeah, but it's all on private property. I don't know if.
And it's existing and it has nothing to do with the development that, so I'm, I'm with Michelle and Steve. You're outvoted on this one.
I was doing the, the math in my head. I kinda came to that conclusion a little bit earlier, but you made it. You, you kinda reinforced that point, so, continue.
All right.
Not that I wouldn't like that intersection to be fixed.
I totally agree with you. I absolutely agree. Not the proper format forum for it.
Pick the building up and move back ten feet, then you can see.
Well, I mean, it, it's one thing to say, you know, whose expense it should be and it's another to have objective information, so.
But to force our developers to give that, even pay for that information to be made available to us, I, I don't think it's putting the responsibility on the, in the appropriate place.
And I understand and you probably don't travel that street.
I travel it every morning. Every morning it's on my commute, so that's an inappropriate thing to say.
There's nothing wrong with that, that, that statement. I travel it quite extensively.
I travel it every morning between that seven to nine.
But when the traffic queue is longer, um, on Main Street because the train, you know, is clear, um, it compounds the problem with the site distance, quite frankly. So the more traffic volume, the more dangerous that intersection. That's the point. So I don't think they're totally unrelated, but it's, I, I understand your point, so let's continue.
Okay, where, where are the majority of us in, in this paper so that we can, uh?
The only correction I've heard, and I'd be pleased to correct this, the only correction I've heard is to clarify the definition of proposed project by saying forty-two units.
Uh, there was one more I thought we agreed on, which is to add, uh, the Seccong, Needham, Main Street intersection to the queuing analysis. I thought we agreed on that.
Did we? I thought that we had, uh,
Thought we, I'd.
I thought that that was just.
It was a volume and not a queuing.
Yeah, well, we need to re- revisit that.
It might be our understanding or misunderstanding of engineering terms for what the issue is at that intersection.
Well, regardless of how one describes the issue, which paragraph does it go in? Cause it oughta go in, I think.
Right.
Let, let, let me, uh, let me clarify maybe. Um, what, um, is unusual is asking the traffic engineer to go out and actually observe the queuing. Uh, every intersection you analyze, you'll get a com, the computer model will print out what the theoretical queue is. But anecdotally, a lot of people say queuing is such a problem there. Sometimes because of site-specific conditions, the model may not precisely quantify what queuing is. So to give everybody a heads up, in this one instance, and this is unusual, I suggested that the engineer actually look at and observe the queue at that location. So that's what's a little unusual. You'll get a queue at any intersection that you run the highway capacity software on. Okay, you'll, it'll tell you what the queue is, but this seemed like kind of a special case from what I've heard.
You're talking about the Main Street, Union Street, Rockwood Road.
But normally you don't go out and observe queues. Normally you just calculate what they are. But this seemed to be like maybe a, something that we should look at because people say it's really bad. The, it, what it may be, you see this at train stations, you get, you know, it's a peak hour factor. The, the hourly volumes that you count are one thing, but if, you know, half that hourly volume occurs in five minutes when people are rushing for the train, maybe that's something you wanna observe to understand how to do the analysis. So that's the only reason I put it in there. Every intersection, Seccong, the driveway and this one, the model will spit out what the fiftieth and ninety-fifth percentile queues are. But this seemed like a special case that warranted somebody actually looking at it to see what's happening now. So let's, so if we wanna extend, if we wanna also observe the queue at the other intersection, I'm not familiar with it during rush hours, so I don't know how much of a queue exists.
I mean, is there a majority of people that would like to add the Seccong one, uh, the Seccong Needham one in or not?
I would.
I, I feel what you mean.
You, you should, Michelle, do you feel as though it should be in there or not to observe it?
I'm neutral on it.
I'm kinda neutral on it myself. I, I go through there fairly regularly at those times and I know it's tough to get across there, but I, I don't think I've ever gotten stuck in a really long queue. I've only been like second or third car at the most.
Yeah, I think the, the worst direction to be coming from is from the Medfield side.
At night.
Yeah, on Seccong. And so then when you're looking right and you're trying to look left and you don't have very good sight distance.
Actually, it's, it's not, right.
And it's, it's really.
It's not at night, it's in the day. The night you got headlights to give you some clue.
Yeah, it's, it's the day, yeah, yeah.
Daytime is.
Probably the worst time, yeah, it's probably the morning in rush hour.
So.
So there is not, there is not a majority.
No, there isn't a majority to add that in, no.
Okay.
So crash data, gonna leave that, right? Site distance, we've covered it, right?
Yeah.
Analysis conditions, you agree with what's here? This is standard, right? Now and five years from now, right?
Yes.
Trip generation is an easy calculation, right? You've already discussed mode split, distribution and assignment. Oh, okay, I got that, yeah. Okay, we've already discussed operations analysis. Anyone wanna clarify anything in there?
Nope.
Impacts. Nothing in there? And the site. Yes, Peter?
I'm just curious, can you tell me what the level of service C standard is done or anyone else that might know?
Well, it, uh, they're, all the levels of service are measure of delay. The, the, um, the usual, well, and that, that's what Norfolk's existing regulation says that you have to mitigate. It's just very conservative to do that. You know, normally you don't get into mitigation till you have a real problem at ENF. So I'm, I'm saying, only worry about it if you're getting a real problem. It does require a waiver of the current standard, which says you gotta mitigate if it's low, level of service C is better than you get in ninety percent of suburban.
Don't we have a level C out here at Independence Drive and Main Street? Isn't that a level C?
I don't know. I, uh, that was calculated in the environmental impact report for the downtown. I don't remember what it was.
I thought that was calculated as a level C.
The people that we're discussing this, uh, potential study with is actually the ones that originally did this one. Cause they write out it right now. So they'll be sent to the store if they get it.
Yeah. Anything else?
No.
All set?
All set.
So we're gonna recommend this. With whatever those subtle changes were that, uh.
Under proposed project, let's say forty-two units. So I'll reissue that with that correct.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Tom, just the forty-two unit, isn't it a lot they said?
Yeah.
Okay. Any new business? No.
We don't necessarily have to dive into that.
No, we don't really have to, but everyone's read it, right? The, the bit about Frederickson Road.
I mean, it's something I, I almost have to drive over there because it's referencing different.
Betsy, could you get, get us copies of that? You scan it and send, send us, send us that?
Connect over there, sure, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably the way to do it.
Michelle can draw you a map. She drives through that intersection every day.
I walk it.
Several days.
But which direction does she come from? Because some directions are worse than others.
What are we, uh, what are we talking about on the?
The Frederickson Road one. Did, did you see the, oh, he may not have.
Oh, yeah, it was like.
Did you see that?
I'll scan it, email it.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's a letter that somebody wrote that sort of gave a hi- historical background of the, the whole. The original name of the road and everything that went through there.
Oh, okay.
Which was a weird name. Strange name.
Yeah.
Michelle, I apologize if I misspoke. It wasn't my intent, but, um, coming in one direction, it's clearly worse than other directions. Coming from Seccong towards, from Medfield across that road.
I'm fully aware of the situation.
Very, it's getting increasingly tricky as the traffic increases in the town.
There's actually a footpath that walks through the woods that connects Oak Knoll to.
Oak View.
Sorry, Oak View to, uh, Frederickson.
Well, you, you go by Mr. Matulowicz's house when you walk through there.
Right, you do come to the back of the house and, uh, feel a little out of place, but.
Now, is the son the only, the son that's been here, the lawyer guy, is he the only one that's still alive? Did he?
I thought that he had mentioned something about the family, so I, I'm not sure whether or not he's the only one.
Somebody still lived in there or not.
He does, although he does, so.
I thought he said he was in Dorchester or is that where his law office is? He's a showman.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's for sure. It's the important one.
We have all the signatures on this one. Michelle has signed spells.
It's live, boy.
Shouldn't be, cause I'm to us.
Peter knows I don't put my, Peter knows I don't put my signature. I don't need to, right?
Right. I've learned.
That one's done.
Okay. That decision's done.
Yeah, get that one with it.
That one's done.
And.
Two vouchers, yeah. Two vouchers to be signed, yeah.
I'll save it for you the next time.
All right. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion adjourn.
I'll second it.
Although it's in favor.
Aye.
Still not bad. Eleven o'clock.